All right, well, good morning, everybody. This is November sixth, two thousand and twenty one. This is our monthly council work session. We have just to call it out in attendance at this moment, we have myself, council president Wolf, council persons Benedetti, Shrimp, and Bruger. We have our mayor Hughes as well as village attorney Jesse Shamp with us. Yeah, so the three things that I had in my mental agenda for this morning was we said we were going to talk about rules of council. We indicated or council person Benedetti had indicated he wanted to adjourn to executive session to discuss complaints regarding our village planner. And then, of course, we have the Tuesday meeting agenda to review. Does anybody care where we start? And does anybody have anything else they wanted to discuss today that we can throw on a list so that we don't forget? Diane, you're muted.
I didn't realize you could go into executive session from a work session.
Yeah.
It had to be a council meeting.
No, you can go to an executive session from a work session.
How, the only question I have, and Jesse, maybe this is for you, and again, I'm gonna ask a similar question like Diane. I thought three council member members had to agree to go into executive session on one particular topic, or myself would have to call it, or I didn't think one person could call it. Is that accurate?
You, you make a motion to adjourn to executive session, and then you need at least three council people to agree.
That's all I wanted to make sure, because I knew there was something to do with that, so I just wanted to make sure we
Yep.
whatever we do, it's correct.
Yep, that's
Let's just start with number one. Let's go down your list. Let's start with, I mean
All right, well, number one was, number one was rules of council is the first that I had laid out. And I did ask everybody to do their homework and bring changes. I'll go ahead and start with my own, which is pretty minimal. And it was in the section regarding committees. And it was the language around ad hoc committees. And that was that the mayor can also appoint committees as needed to address specific issues. And I believe that that should be the mayor or a majority of council can appoint committees as needed to address specific issues. Anybody have an issue with that change?
Well, that's a majority. Well, the rules of council are, I think they're a little more specific about, they don't just say majority, they say what kind of majority?
A simple majority.
Of those present at the time, or what?
Yeah, well, a majority of council. So if there's only four people there, you would still, no matter what, you're gonna need three, is what I'm, what I'm proposing. A majority of council.
Isn't a majority four?
Well, yeah, sorry, that was just me bet mathing poorly.
Well, that's a majority, that's what I mean, a majority is that four, so if there's only four people there, you can't do it.
Right, but if everybody said yes.
Well, yeah, you could if everybody said yes. Or you just wait until the next meeting to appoint the, right, you wait until you have the majority. I mean, you can, you can, you can try to bite that apple every week until you get enough people to say yes. Just like anything else.
I obviously don't have an issue with it, whether I do it or whether you guys do it, I don't need power to, I don't have an issue with it.
And it's
Not that it matters, what I think, but
Right, I, I don't foresee an issue with it, but it just is a power that I think can happily reside in both places. So that does, nobody's opposing this change, it doesn't sound like, so
I'm sorry, I would, I would like to get it, the document up, so I could see exactly where you're talking about. And then so give me a second.
All right, I can, I have it on, I'm using two different computers right now, which is why I didn't share my screen, but I can get it up on my screen and share it too, if you give me a moment. Then we can all be looking at the same page. Truth be told, I probably have this documented down, document downloaded like ten times to my hard drive, but
Right, I know.
It's, you know, where, what host disabled participant screen sharing, way to go, host.
Oh, how do I fix it? More?
I can, I can fix it, but well, you're the, you're in there as administrator, so
Does anybody know where I go?
It's in the it's in the, you know how long the administrative section scrolls and scrolls, and so one of the things is, I think it's on the main screen, though, where you just check the box, it says allow participants.
Got it, wait, allow participants to mute themselves?
There's one for allowing participants to screen share. It's on the screen share, it's the screen share, and then screen share participants.
I don't have that option, I just have the mute and unmute and all of that. Share screen, hang on, we're trying. See if that help, like I'm
Yeah, that seems to have done the trick.
Did it, okay.
Yep, all right, so let me scroll, scroll, scroll.
And, and whatever changes we're gonna agree to is who's going to make the changes?
That was gonna be my next question. Who has an editable copy of this document?
I, I do, because I, I was the last one, that I think I was the last one.
Then, sounds like either you can send it to me and I can make these changes, or you can send it to the mayor and the administration can make the changes, but it's
Somebody just puts them in red or something like that, I mean, I, again, we have, I have no, Diane, you're more than welcome to, or we can do it.
I, I don't, I guess I don't mind doing it.
Looks, looks to me like the copy that's up on the website was scanned from something from a three-ring binder, the way these, these marks are on the page.
Well, then, is that, well, I never put whole bunches in mine, so I I wonder, are you sure it's the latest one?
This is the one that's on the website right now.
Is there a date on it, does anybody know?
Pardon?
Is there a date on this one? And that's what we can make sure that we do on the next one, because I know that they get our meeting, they'll
They should be right at the top of the document, it should be right at
Right at the top of the document, all right, hold on, let me scroll back up. November ninth, twenty twenty. Rules of council, twenty twenty one. So that's that's the ones for this year. All right, so sorry again for the scrolling. So again, my change was pretty simple.
Can you eliminate the, the listings on the site, so we can see the whole document? We're only seeing two thirty, there you go.
You mean that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, and so, again, the only change I am proposing was the mayor or a majority of council, and we can put in parentheses, four, can also appoint committees as needed to address specific issues.
Okay, and then just historically, this was a very sensitive point with the previous mayor. So although council at the time wanted the unilateral right to create a committee, then there was opposed to that, so we made it mayor and council. And I think the legal council at the time also insisted that council couldn't on their own appoint a, a committee. So Jesse's on, Jess, did you have any opinion on that?
I don't know why they, why a council couldn't commit, couldn't start their own committee by majority vote. I, I'll admit that I haven't looked at that, but I don't see why. I mean, the committees are creatures of the council already. So, and you know, as the overseeing body of the whole village, I would think they would have the, the authority to, to create their own.
Isn't there a section that covers the committees and, and at the end of this?
No, this is it, well, this is it right here. Yeah. So, you're thinking of an older version.
Okay.
So there, there's also nothing in O R C about committees for villages. At least regarding these kinds of committees, there's something, there's stuff about a planning and zoning commission, but these committees are entirely creatures of our rules of council.
And I would, I would agree with that, because the, you don't even have to have committees. I mean, there's nothing, nothing in the statutory code that says you council even has to have.
Oh, yeah. There is, there is nothing that, that makes us have these, which means that implies to me that we can do with it. No, I'll say it another way, these committees are created by our rules of council. So our rules of council should be able to dictate if, how, and when they can or cannot be created.
So you want to change this to unless otherwise decided by mayor or way manager?
That paragraph that you're reading up there is about filling a vacancy.
Yes, where, where is your spot that you want?
Ad hoc.
Just, just down here on ad hoc.
Oh, ad hoc.
Yep. Just that if, as a council body, we decide we want to stand up a committee that is specifically, I don't know, retention pond maintenance for, I'm just making something up. Right, then we, and the mayor says, no, absolutely not, we can do it without the mayor, we can stand up the committee.
The mayor or council by majority vote?
A ma, the mayor or majority of council.
Yeah.
And can we think, while we're talking about it, can I just take out fire and EMS service of the village? Do you guys have an issue with that? Like, if we're gonna fix it, can we just fix it?
No.
Sounds like a good idea.
No, I disagree, because
Well, E M S, okay, because of the services for the contract.
Right, the safety committee would still have oversight over that contract.
Perfect. And you want that to stay that way.
I, I would imagine if we are I, I would think so, but I mean, other people are welcome to disagree, and we can talk it through.
It says to provide oversight to the police and fire, I mean, only oversight we have is a proven is a proven contract.
Which you already do, but it doesn't hurt to leave it in there, I guess, is the, the other part.
Yeah, so, so by calling that out, what I would, the way I imagine it is that in not too very long, I'm sure we will have to renegotiate that contract. If, by having that in there, it would directly fall to the purview of the safety committee to engage in that process. If we pull it out, then there is no
Finance.
But finance doesn't necessarily engage in the terms of the contract, just the final number.
Well, the council, council doesn't negotiate contracts per se.
Well, if we say in this thing that they have the oversight, they certainly can, there is nothing in the O R C that says that council can't negotiate contracts.
The, the, okay, so if I'm if I'm negotiating a contract, I, as a businessperson, I'm negotiating contract, I want to negotiate with the person that has the authority to sign the contract, I don't want to negotiate with other people who then you know, I want to know that once the negotiations are completed, that things can be signed, so I don't usually bother with other people, I want to negotiate with the person that has the ability to sign, so from a practical point of view, I, I'm not sure that participation in it, fine, for sure. But negotiating, negotiating, that's a technical word, so that, that means that you know, I'm in a position to sign it.
But, but I actually don't have authorization to sign it without council approval anyways.
Exactly. And, and again, by, by striking it from this, so
Right.
thinking back to when we negotiated this contract last, I would say that I, as a council person, played a fairly active role in that process. If we remove that oversight from this provision in the rules of council, I wouldn't necessarily have a justified right to impose myself in that proceeding.
I think the way it, it strikes the balance in that it says this is accomplished through regular meetings with the department heads, mayor, fiscal officer, it doesn't say that, you know, that there is an ultimate responsibility, it kind of softens it up a little bit, because you don't want to have a situation where the safety committee is not available, for whatever reason, to, at the time that the thing needs to be done. Because ultimately, the mayor is responsible, I don't, whoever is doing it, but ultimately, there's the responsibility falls on the mayor, I mean, you can't have a village without safety services, so that would go against any kind of
The council's the one that gives the mayor the authority to sign things, I mean, Diana.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that, but ultimately, if the people, are the people, the people who live in the village are going to blame the mayor, and rightly so, if there's no service contract.
Well, it's not right, because
I would certainly
I can't sign it without you guys.
I would certainly hope they blame all of us, so, so I, I'm, I'm not sure. Okay, so again, all this is calling out is that the safety committee has oversight over however fire and EMS are being provided to the village. Right, so in the engagement of any future negotiations, having this committee lets the mayor know, hey, your safety committee should be involved to some degree. Right, whatever that degree may be, that both the safety committee and the mayor agree is acceptable, right, that could nearly be, they meet beforehand and say, hey, we, here's, here's what we as a committee think, we shouldn't accept, you know, an increase of any more than X, or any decrease in service more than Y, go and negotiate that. Or it could be that they want to be in the room and yell at the guy across the table, but that's for future, future moments to determine. But if we remove fire and EMS from here, and that negotiation comes up, then the mayor, whomever that may be at that time, could say, well, you know, I don't see you having any, any oversight on this beyond saying I can or can't sign whatever contract I negotiate. And if that's what you're suggesting, Diane, this isn't a hill I'm gonna die on, like, if we really, really want it's, it's fine, I'm just saying, I don't see a harm in leaving it there.
I, I think that what has happened in the past is that it's, it's worked itself out, based on the personalities of, and the availability of various parties. And I've, you know, I've been under two administrations now, and I've seen it where, you know, there is, there is a participation, and there's not been a participation, so I'm I do agree that, you know, it should stay in there, though, because it is a service contract. So
Sorry.
Good discussion, ready to move on?
Excellent.
Are we fixing the ad hoc, and who's fixing it, and?
So I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do the changes, I've got, okay, perfect.
Yeah, I've got one, I'd like that.
Sure.
You know, be my head against the dead wall, against, uh, you know, I'd like to see the citizens' comments time increased to five minutes instead of three.
I would be in favor of that.
So, that's something that I, as someone who's conned the council and spoke before, three, believe it or not, three minutes, sometimes it's hard to get your point across, and you end up having to speed where you to try to get through your, your point. You know, so, and, and you know what happened with Segovia, you know, he's trying to hurry up and get through his, his, you know, statement. And, you know, the alarm's going off, and I don't believe that, that, you know, there's that many people coming to make statements that we can't add a couple minutes, and make it five instead of three.
So, I just have to, and I would disagree with that, I think three minutes is fine, people need to be succinct, and they need to not ramble. And if they have a really important point that went across, it could bring another resident with them to step up and make another point about the same topic, I think this makes it I, I
Two minutes, two minutes is gonna kill you.
My opinion, yeah.
So I'd be in favor of expanding the time. So here's, here's some thoughts I have in this, I haven't quite landed anywhere. But if, if what I have been told in the past is true, this three-minute number came as a direct result of residents coming in and abusing council in the citizens' comments time, that they would come in and basically harangue council, and there was no mechanism by which the council at that time could say, okay, your time is up, because they didn't have this number. And three minutes is what was come up with.
That's not accurate. That's not accurate.
That's, that's
Well, what happened is it used to be five minutes until I started to show up, and then they changed it to three, it wasn't because a bunch of people were showing up, it was because I showed up and was making comments in every meeting, and it went from five to three.
Yeah, Tony, by, by, by citizens, I really meant you, I just was trying not to call you out by name. I, I was, I was doing my best to not point out that you are the cause for this.
I am, I mean, it's
Okay, so as long as you're owning up to it, that you're the cause of it, and not, not to call it out in exactly the same way, but since you're gonna be on the other side of the table, and you needed it to be, we need, the council at some point in time needed to be three minutes to to have civil discourse, because you were haranguing council, and you will be on the other side of the table, again, I am disinclined at your suggestion to expand it.
Right, that's, okay, I'm glad this is all on record, is that you're, do not want to give the residents any more time than three minutes to be harangued, in your language. And that's fine, if that's what you guys want to do, is to limit the amount of time, then do it.
So Tony, Tony, you will also notice that harangue is a pretty specific word. Because what I was gonna propose is that if we want to expand that time, that's fine, but I would then like to tighten up the language about the nature and demeanor of the comment, so that we could gavel somebody out who was just there to yell. Because what I don't want to be is yelled at. If you wanna, if you want to, if someone wants to come with reasonable concerns, that's fine, but if they want to yell, I'm kind of out. And if they want to, if they want to make ad hominem attacks, I'm kind of out, right, so
There is language about citizen, why don't we go to that? I mean, it does have language about what you're seeing. I think it's towards the end.
So, here's my quick thing, we'd allow people the green cards, which gives them their three minutes. It also gives them an additional three minutes at the end, so any one person could technically have six minutes. If you do multiple green cards, they also have the addition of the three minutes. So, here's, here's what I'm gonna say, and it may not be, and this is not based on one specific person, because I've been a person with citizen comments as well in the past. So, I think three minutes was plenty, I think you start rambling after three minutes. I think for most people, I, I think for most people, you can get your point across within three minutes, and again, you have the opportunity of the green card as well as citizen comments, and I'm not gonna go any further on that, because you get five people, you give them five minutes each, after a two-hour-long meeting on the first Monday, you know, the first Monday or Tuesday or whatever, you're now looking at a three-hour meeting, and
We've never had a two-hour meeting this year.
We have had over two-hour meetings, yes, we most certainly have, because you can go through and look at the video times.
Whatever, all right, that's fine, I've made my point, I've tried, you guys want to
But I, I mean, in all fairness, Tony, I mean, you, they, you have the ability of at least six minutes, just with one green card in citizen comments. That's all my point is, they already have six minutes.
Not if it's not about something that's on the agenda.
We've not turned anybody away with a green card, though. I mean, so far, in, in this particular last two or three weeks, we've had one particular resident able to come in and spend at least six minutes talking about one specific item.
Well, I, I would say that I would just caution, when you, when you decide to be, you know, subjective about someone taking longer or shorter time, someone's going to start shouting favoritism, and you're just picking on me, so I, I just would, I mean, I, I understand magnanimous and all that jazz, but some people don't take it that way, anyway, so many people aren't gonna take it that way, so it's, it's better to have a standard rule and stick with it. That's all, and, and I think that, you know, if, if a subject is that serious, I think that again, there is a separate discussion, any group of four or more, it's on the screen now, or delegate of four or more wishing to appear before a council should direct letter to fiscal officer, blah, blah, and then they, you know, perhaps they might get more time, so if they were doing a, if they wanted to do a presentation, and it was gonna take five minutes, or eight minutes, or ten minutes, on a, on the lake dredging, and, and they may wanted to present some information that they gleaned, this one, this one might be one where you know, permission would be given to speak longer. And it's not just, you know, individual ranting, so I, I think there's, there's room in there, there's room in there for citizens taking more time to speak, for sure. But I know when we had the basketball court, that was a good example, I mean, when it came to the basketball court, there were several people that came in as a group, and one by one, they get, got up into their three minutes, and they each one of them brought up a different point about the basketball court, and how they were opposed to it, and worked very well. And I was very respectful, and I, it can be done, you know, you can you, you can make your point very well using the system that exists today.
And thank you for pointing out the nine minutes, because actually, that is something I didn't, you know, I, because my statement was a little off, because depending on how many green cards, but basically, they could do two green cards in a citizen comment.
I, I wanted to highlight that, because it, I, in rereading this, I had actually thought it was higher, because I previously was under the impression that someone could submit a green card for each section of the each section of the agenda, get their three minutes on each one of those, plus a citizen's comment. I guess I might want to, while we're in this section and talking about it, we might want to ask Jesse, because I feel like limiting someone to to commenting on two sections of the agenda feels like a limitation of speech, so I, we might want to ask that question, if that is in fact a legal thing, if we are inviting people in general to comment on sections, at sections of the agenda, can we limit the number of sections of the agenda that a P, that a person may comment on?
Sure, and I'll say, it makes me a little queasy to do that, I mean, the, the, the public meeting is like the quintessential public forum, where speech is at its most protected, and if we say, oh, it's nice that you have a thought on this topic, but that's all you, you're going to be able to talk about tonight. I think that's probably something we should, we should address.
Yep. So, so here's, here's a follow-up thought to that, right, because what we could do is actually do away with the green cards, and only open it up to citizens' comments, at citizens' comments. And in a horse trade for that, I would also think then it would be within reason to extend it to five minutes, right, so if we are saying, you know, you can't come in and talk about, you know, put in a green card for every section of the agenda, right, because because that's a lot, but we'll give you five minutes at the end, I think that is a fair compromise between the two positions.
I agree with that.
A fair and legal compromise between the two positions.
Right. So then it just limits you to one topic.
No, in your citizen's comment, you can talk to, to as many topics as you care to
Well, but now
in your five minutes.
Right now, so now it's down to, you only get five minutes, so it's even less.
Down to, down to five minutes, I don't understand, the, the thing is, is this is, this is not in the right place, the, the heading is green card, and then the second paragraph talks about citizens' comments, so that's not right. So so where the nine minutes is, 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 is in the citizens' comment section.
I think it is conflating or confusing the general term of a citizen making a comment, and the section of the agenda that is
Well, this says, yeah, this is citizens may comment after new business. That is citizens' comments, that, the, the top, the heading on that, this parent, this section is green card, so that would, that's not correct. That, that is confusing. That, that is confusing.
The other thing I have a, a, a problem issue with is, and it's still in that first paragraph under green cards. Uh, may comment on a specific topic during a council meeting except when legislation is being voted on. I uh, one, I think that's vague. Does that mean they can't comment on things that are being legislated? Or they can't comment when legislation is being voted on, which is every meeting we vote on legislation. So that, that sentence.
They mean, no, it means voted on as in passing. So you have, if you have the three readings, if you have the three readings, so this is, I think, presuming you have the three readings, they have two previous opportunities. They have two opportunities.
My, my, my point is it's not clear. This, but I don't see where, I mean, it's just, it's not clear. Is, is, is my point to it.
I think that line ought to get taken out now that you mentioned it, Mark. You know, because you can't talk.
And say, no, I really still don't like this. Please don't vote for it. I'm okay that they've had two chances to say that cuz, you know, I'm okay ignoring them and doing what I'm gonna do anyway. Yeah, I think that whole prepositional phrase could be stricken, right? Except when legislation is being voted on. Yeah, because I, I think that what they were trying to imply is, is where that, that.
We open it up for discussion, you know, and that maybe is implied that the citizen can discuss too. I don't.
Yeah, I, I think cuz you could. So a, a citizen could put in a green card regarding a piece of legislation on the agenda. And the way that that would play out is legislative chair would read, do the reading. And then we would introduce their green card saying this person would like to speak on this piece of legislation that it, that has been read. Right? That is absolutely appropriate. Uh, you know, hell, I think that's eighty percent of why we have these meetings. So, but I think what they were trying to, yeah, I don't know. Someone, someone wrote that and it was, it was clear in their head, but it's not clear in my head or councilperson Bruegger's head, it sounds like. I would, I would propose that we take that sentence and just strike everything from the except to the, to the period, right? Citizens may comment on a specific topic during a council meeting. They do so by filling out a green card with their name and the topic they wish to address and handing the card to the presiding chair, who will determine the appropriate time for the resident to speak.
And that's why I don't think we should take out the nine minutes because you're saying right there in that sentence is you can comment on different things, so.
Well, right, so, well, if, so what I was proposing was because if, if we are allowing this at three, three minutes, uh, a, a tick, right? And we have, by memory, eight, eight boxes on that green card where someone can suggest that they would like to speak on a, a thing, right? Eight times three is twenty-four. Plus the three minutes of citizens comments. What we are offering is twenty-seven minutes of, of public time. And that seems like a lot to me.
I would say that's fair.
Twenty, twenty-seven minutes seems like a lot. So I am suggesting again that either, right, but I also feel like there is some um constitutionally inappropriate nature to saying you only get nine minutes total or even twelve minutes total, so you can only speak on three of the topics on the agenda? That seems, that seems like if someone brought suit, we couldn't defend that.
Yeah, that, that's right. You can, you can restrict time generally with a reasonable.
Right, but you can't, but you can't restrict.
Of what they want to talk about.
So, again, what I, why, why I was proposing, you know, because I think that in five minutes, a person who um, has reasonably gathered their thoughts, you can say an awful lot in five minutes. Uh, a, a, a very awful lot. If, if you have come to that discussion with the uh, with some forethought and uh a goal to, to really communicate a focused point. Now, if, if you're coming to the meeting just to be mad about everything someone says, you're probably not gonna get everything in that you want to say. But with, with some amount of forethought, you can say an awful lot in five minutes.
Hmm, well, I, so just to then put that into action, I think if the first paragraph, the first paragraph is about green cards and if you want to make it five minutes per green card, then uh, or whatever you want to do for, so in the first paragraph will be directed to green cards specifically. And there would be the number of minutes allowed up there for green cards. And then in the next paragraph, it would have bolded citizen comments after new business. And then in that aspect is this, um, you know, uh, language. Uh, how, and, and we would just leave off the, and just say citizens comments may include this many minutes, but take out the no citizens will have more than nine minutes cuz that, that although in, in the citizen comments, if, if this is after the new business and a citizen is getting up and commenting, we're not talking about the green cards anymore. We're talking about after new business. I think that we could probably, uh, we could probably limit that. So uh, how would the minutes be split between the green card again and the the citizens comment? How would that be split?
What I am proposing is to do away with green cards. That we limit the, the citizens comments to just the citizens comments section of the meeting.
Can we get a vote on who wants to do that?
I, I think that, uh, I kinda think that the, um, I think the green, I, I don't know. I think the green card is, uh, although I, I've never liked the green cards, say they're kind of annoying, but I do think they kinda add a little bit of order to the meeting somehow.
I would argue that they, when they are utilized, I think they interject far more chaos than order, but.
Well, that is, now, the last time you did allow somebody to speak, even though it wasn't on legislation, I think if we stick with if we, if we stick with the rule that the green cards are comments related to legislation that's on the table or the specific, then, then uh, if, if it's related specifically to legislation, I think the green cards work. But if you allow people to write a green card about something that is not part of legislation and should be in citizens comments, which we've been kinda doing, um, then you're right, it gets muddied.
I don't think, I don't think green cards were ever intended to be limited to legislation on, on the agenda.
Right, they're not. There's all those different topics, planning and zoning, say, you mean, all those different.
They are, they, the, the intention, uh, which I also don't hate, right? Is to bring in the citizens comments in the section of the meeting that is relevant to their concern. Right? So that if I as a citizen have great concerns over our policing matters, right? When either the safety committee or the chief gives their, their update, they can interject their comment in a relevant portion of the meeting. And that has a value. I'm not saying it doesn't. What I'm saying is that we are um, we are, we are talking about how we want to invite that into our meeting, right? And what controls, uh, do we want? What controls can we legally do, right? And so on the one side, right? Because we cannot say, uh, because the way it is currently structured, what we are saying is that you can come to our meeting, you can address counsel. Uh, at, at, up to, uh, and again, this is just from memory and I think it's eight sections. And again, by the math, if we gave everybody their three minutes, right? We would, we're offering anybody who comes in the door twenty-seven minutes each meeting to address counsel. Well, that is.
Except for the nine-minute at any council meeting.
Well, but what I'm saying is that that's not constitutional. If someone wanted to challenge us on that nine minutes in court, we would lose that. Right? And, and Jesse is nodding his head.
Yeah.
So because we, because we are inviting people in and saying, comment at each, you have the opportunity to comment at each one of these sections. What I'm saying is that we can legally say, no, you don't get to comment at each one of these sections. You do get to comment, but at one point, and we will give you this much time. That is legal and viable.
If we did that, I would definitely want to move it up to five minutes then.
And I am fine with that.
Yes, I mean.
That's why, I'm sorry, David, just to finish. That's why the green card, I think, is there because some people may want to try to, when you're, when you're pat, going through the legislative process and you're about to vote for something and someone feels passionately against it, they, and they want to try to persuade council to, to change their mind before they vote, then that has to happen. That has to happen at that point in the, uh, in the, in the meeting, not in citizen comments after it's too late.
Exactly. This is what you guys were trying to limit what participation the residents can have. And that's just infuriating to me. You know, it's like and I, you know, being the person that's probably gonna be coming to the meetings and saying the most, you know, I don't, this village isn't that big and there isn't that many people coming that you can't listen to them. And that's what I hear at these meetings is hurry up, there's three minutes, you're done, move on, we're moving on.
That, that is my perspective as well.
There, there are also other channels by which a person can communicate with counsel. Right? This is not the only method by which a resident.
Method that people get to see.
That is, that is also not necessarily true, right? Because if they were to email with counsel, all of that is public record. Right? We could, we could also develop other forums for public comment. This meeting is not the only forum for public comment.
More complicated.
Okay, so I, I think this is what ultimately we're either trying to do or not trying to do, or people are gonna say what they're, we're trying to do. So at the end of the day, we barely get anybody that comes in. Um, you know, you have less than probably five people that come in and make citizen comments. You know, I don't know if we're trying to do this because it, it, obviously it's the end of the year and we all have been to these meetings and we see things that are productive, things that aren't productive, all of that. Um, I also would not want to sit through twenty-seven minutes of somebody that's just upset about the day. Um, and you know, not yelling at us, but going through three minutes on every single topic just because they can. Um, most people don't have time for that. I get it, but I'm sure that, you know, you always have that one or two. So are we trying to stop that one or two from being able to come in and do that? Um, I think that's we're, and, and I, I think that's where Tony's going with this. I mean, if somebody liter, does, does just want to come in and, and do that, are we going to allow them?
It says at the bottom here, if I can, it says, all time speaker must be civil, courteous and address topics and issue before towns. Right. I mean, so you can't just go out there and rant and rave about stuff unless it's something that's a topic that's, you know, before towns.
Well, ci- citizens' comment has always been broader. We, we, we have always allowed a citizen to comment on whatever they feel may be the business of the village. So even if, so if you limited it to only what's on the agenda and you want to come and talk to council about the lakes and there's no lake business on the agenda, then you couldn't.
You could at citizen comments.
Time speakers must be civil and courteous and address topics and issues before the council.
What if you move citizen comments to the beginning of the meeting and so that people could talk about forthcoming legislation?
Yeah, that's, I, I was going to suggest something similar, Jesse. I was gonna suggest that we part of what can be done to alleviate Diane's concerns, that if someone is there to address council regarding legislation is that you could put it, uh, you could put citizens' comments immediately before the reading of legislation. Right? So it would allow people to hear, uh, all of the reports of the day. Right? It would allow them to gather every, all of the outgoing communication that we have intended. Right? And know what, what legislation is on the agenda. Then they have their time to speak to whatever they just heard and whatever they have to say about the, you know, the legislation to be read. And so you, you are fully informed when you have your time and you can still have the opportunity to impact legislation.
I've heard all kinds of suggestions. Go ahead, David.
My, my, my opinion on this is similar to Tony's. Um, I, I feel that, you know, we the people should have very lenient ways to, to address us, even if that's not necessarily pleasant. That's uh, I mean, you know, with, within, within the framework of being courteous, um, whether it means moving the citizens' comments to the beginning, whether it means extending green cards to five minutes. I, I'm not in lo, I'm not in love or hating either of those ideas, but I mean, I, I would feel that people look, whether, whether they're happy or not, the people should have a very, um, um, a lot of ways to address us. I, I do apologize if I'm not expressing myself totally clearly. I just got off a thirteen-hour shift, but, um, I don't know, I, 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 I definitely agree. I agree with the, um, with the premise of Tony's argument.
I like the idea that Brian, I like the idea of putting it before legislation. I, for sure. I don't think we should, you know, we want the citizens to feel as if they can come in and get their point across. We want to be able to hear what they have to say. There, as Brian mentioned, there's numerous ways for people to communicate. I'm gonna be honest, I get emails probably every single day, um, that people don't, maybe they just don't have time to come to a meeting, so they're expressing their concerns in a different form. I understand people want to be heard in a live public meeting. Great. So I, I love the idea of the five minutes. I love the idea of it being before legislation. Um, because I feel like at some point it does become, because I've done it, I know I've done it, it becomes rambling. And I'm guilty.
But that, you know, because someone rambles doesn't mean they shouldn't be heard.
But after three to five minutes, Tony, at what point do you let him go? I'm not saying that we aren't gonna let him go twenty-seven minutes. All I'm saying is that's the discussion. I think you guys have a great discussion. It's good news is it's your guys' decision, not mine.
And it's always been the tradition that if, if the council or uh, anybody who is an invited person to the, to the meeting engages in discussion, the discussion time is not subtracted from their, their time. So if someone really came with a topic that was, you know, engaged counsel or the mayor or the chief or whatever, and there was discussion that ensued right then and there, they can, they can get more than the five minutes. Right? But that is very, very rarely the case. In my experience, it's usually some sort of um, ad hominem attack that then people get flustered and feel like they have to defend themselves. And then it ensues into an argument. And then we have the argument for seven minutes instead of a neat and timely and appropriate conversation. So, and that's what I don't want, right? I, I, I feel like having too many opportunities just degrades the quality of the conversation. I, I'm gonna turn off my camera cuz my breakfast just got here. So you don't have to watch. You're right.
And I would, uh, yeah, and, and part of my, my concern, I'm, I'm, I'm good with, you know, residents coming and talking, but and I don't know, maybe it's just what we have to deal with. Residents who are gonna come, bring up the same point again and again and take as much time to say the same thing they said last week. At some point, it is a business meeting and it's sort of like, yes, we've, we've heard this. What, what's your point? That, what's, what's new or different and?
We're all talking about one person and that's gonna eventually come to a stop. I mean, one way or another.
It's, it's, it's one person until the next person. Talking about someone who is really upset about something and wants to come and say, you're terrible people, you don't care about the thing, you're not doing your job right, and it's because of this issue I have. And that's always good. There's always gonna be someone with that. It, it, I mean, or not always, but that's going to happen. And at one point is, do you say, look, you, you've, you've come and spoke your piece on this?
No, you're gonna get, you're gonna get three points. No, but I have five minutes. So uh, I, I think that, and, and it isn't just, th- these rules are for situations like school boards are having right now. Where they have, it isn't for the time, the normal times when people don't show up. It's the times when it's really important for the people to have a voice is when you're doing something contrary. it's really important for the people to have a voice is when you're doing something controversial and people are upset about it. And if you have ten, twenty people come in and you give them each, uh, five minutes and you put that before your legislative business. Then you may find that you're there till two o'clock in the morning. And, and if that's what y'all want, because you know, this then fine. But I think that's why citizens' comments are often put at the end is because these rules are for that ten, five percent of the time or ten percent of the time depending on what y'all are doing. Uh, where things are, uh, where something is up, where people want to comment. And you want to get all their comments in. And that's, I think, why it was limited to three minutes because when you when you have something that's, that is difficult, which is not frequently, but where you have ten or twenty people coming in and each one of them wants to have their say, which is correct. Uh, and then you multiply that by three minutes, you're talking about a lot of time. So I mean, that, that's what the rules are basically for. And I, I think that, uh, again, if it's a really important topic, people could, it doesn't, i- it's not just one voice, it'll be multiple voices and, and having the citizens' comment part be at the end of the meeting. Also, probably, um, I'll say this tends to dissuade people from talking too long because you know, it's the end of the meeting and they, they're tired and want to go home too. But, uh, uh, I think that, uh, eliminating the green cards. The green card should be just to discuss, in my opinion, legislation on the table. Not, not something on the agenda. If they want to talk about the chief, the report the chief gave, chief of police. Then they can do it in citizen comment because uh, I think they can do it because we're not voting on what the chief says. We're not voting on anything like that. So doing the green cards for only things that are going to be voted on in legislation, having everything else at the end in citizen comments. And keeping the comments to, uh, keeping the comments to three minutes or even if you resist on five, I think most of the time five will be okay. But like I said, if you have a big crowd in there and you have a situation where people are upset, then, then you may, you may regret doing that. But anyway, that, uh, just because you, you, once you, once you open the door and have, you have to let everyone speak. I mean, that's just you're in, get in trouble if you don't.
And people, I mean, as unpleasant as it may be for us. You know, should something larger controversial come up, like at these school board meeting with these anti-master lunatics? Yes, that's on public record. Um, the, um, you know, come, come up to the ICU and have a look, you know, never mind. Um. But these people, um, is unpleasant as it may be, it's still their right to address us. And I would be on the um, leaning more towards, um, leaning more towards the Tony perspective of as much uh, opportunity as possible to do so.
I would say that if we wanted to eliminate those things from happening, maybe we should do things differently. And if, and if, uh, you know, twenty people are upset about something and it takes four hours for the meeting, so be it.
I would, to a certain extent, disagree because I don't plan on changing how I do things if one person is really upset.
I just said twenty.
Even if it's twenty people who are really upset, twenty people out of a village of twenty-five hundred is one percent of the people. And if it's one percent who are very organized and want to come in and disrupt things. That to me isn't a, a, a significant number of people, to be honest.
To describe it as disrupting is disingenuous in itself because those people are there for a reason. They have a concern. And, you know, it's just, you know what, can we just get, you know, what is it that we're gonna do here?
Come to a landing here at some point. So.
I like Brian's idea, give him the opportunity to say it before legislation. I think that is why most people are there. And then they have the five minutes at citizen comments. I think the majority, if we're trying to do this for the average person, the average person is going to be completely totally fine with having the opportunity for that. The only person that's gonna be upset about this is the person that wants to come in and
Grandstand, we can call it.
Okay, I don't want to be the one to say it. So somebody else can say it. So the average person is coming in to make a comment or a concern about a specific topic. If they really have an issue with every single topic, maybe they need to set up an appointment with myself or a council member and sit down and, you know, just try to work things out, figure it out. Maybe there's a different avenue that, that should be looked at. Um, if they really have an issue with every single thing, maybe there's miscommunication, maybe whatever. So all my point is, is I think the, giving somebody the opportunity to talk about legislation before it's passed, I think is what we should do. And I think people should have the citizen comments. I think having somebody come up and talk three minutes about every single topic. Which we've never had anybody do. So again, we're doing, you know, we're, we're spending twenty minutes on what if somebody tried to do this? Nobody's ever done it.
I have no intention of doing anything like that, right?
I don't think anybody would. I, I think, you know.
In my recollection, we have had someone speak on four topics, uh, plus a citizen's comment, least once.
So, and they do that, it all reverts back to the same thing, even though it's code enforcement or something else, it typically reverts. They're using that one, they're still complaining or concerned about one, one particular thing that they're using their three minutes just to I, I get that. I mean, I've, I've seen it. So I didn't know how many times, but I think at the end of the day, that's what we're trying to do. This is a business meeting. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna totally agree with Mark when it comes to this. There are different avenues if they are really upset about a lot of different things. Um, and in five minutes, you can get a lot of your point across in citizen comments at the end. So I think the legislation is the most important. Um, and I think people should be able to speak on legislation before it happens. Um, again, most of the time you have more than one reading. So they could come three weeks in a row. Um. If that, if it's not an emergency or whatever. So, you know, I, I get that. I think that they should have, but I don't vote on it. So that's my two cents, since we don't have one of the extra members here, but you guys make the decision.
Compromise.
Yeah. So I think the last thing that was on the table here was if I so I, actually, I wanted to roll back. So Diane had also suggested offering green cards to, to give opportunity to speak individually on each piece of legislation on the agenda. Plus a citizen's comment, um, which was, which is interesting to me. Um, I don't, I don't dislike that. Or the other thing that was still on the table was just a citizen's comment section immediately proceeding. Uh, the reading of legislation, uh, and expanding that time to five minutes. So uh, if those are the two options that we are considering, right? And just for clarity. Right? The, the product of this conversation is gonna be a draft of the, of the rules of council. Which we will, I'm sure have the opportunity to talk about at least one more time. And then we will vote to adopt. So this isn't a voting to adopt a change. This is a, a temperature of the room to understand how that draft should be, uh, crafted. So why don't we go around and say if it's option A, a, an opportunity to use a green card to speak on each piece of legislation on the agenda that night, uh, plus a citizen's comment, or option B. One citizen's comment opportunity immediately before the reading of legislation, uh, that would be expanded to five minutes. Which are you, which would you prefer? And I will start by saying I would prefer option B. And then we'll go to councilperson McNamara.
I would say that the one before, um, the one before legislation, option B is a fair enough option. I mean, it's, yeah, I, I would say that's, that's probably reasonably fair for about everybody who would be interested.
Right? Councilperson Shrimp?
Uh, I, I would, I'd like to have a, but that's my opinion.
She said she would prefer A of those two options, but that was, that, that was her speaking. Tony?
I don't like any of the two options that you presented. If I go back to leaving it like it was, sorry, I brought it up.
All right. Uh, so, uh, and then councilperson, uh, Bruger?
Um. So the options are just on, got them straight in my head. Either everyone can have a chance, one, one time per meeting, five minutes at the end.
Oh.
Or immediately before reading legislation.
Oh, was it, we'd move it to immediately before legislation, five minutes.
It gives a, a citizen the opportunity to comment on the legislation that is about to be read.
Or anything else.
Or anything else, right?
Talk about what you want. Spend five minutes talking about why your dog is better than everyone else's or why your neighbor's dog is a jerk.
Right.
Whatever. Or three minutes, and would that be three minutes per piece of legislation?
Yeah, I think so.
And citizen comment at the end.
Right. I would just give her, give everyone their five minutes for comments and, and let them choose what they're gonna talk about.
All right, so.
But I guess B was that option.
Through this exercise, we've definitely had more people interested in option B than option A. Uh, in fairness, we didn't test this against leaving it as it is, with the one caveat that having looked at it, I don't think we can leave it as it is. We would at the very least need to strike the no citizen will have more than nine minutes at any council meeting. Right? And that was what Tony had said was his, his preference. So we can, does anybody uh, feel like that is the optimal route to go to, uh, leave it as it is with the only caveat that we would strike the limitation of nine minutes.
And except when legislation is being voted on.
Well, yeah, and we would strike that as well.
Yeah, I think that we just decided to strike. That's
Yeah.
Not much of a debate at this point, I think anyone like that.
That's what I would like because all the, all the options that you provided, you know, limits what you can comment about. It's only about legislation. That's only or you get your five minutes to talk about whatever. You know, but it's a combination of you know, it's only, now it's down to five minutes that you, you will let a resident speak. And like I keep saying, this is the character of the village, is that we don't want to list, you know, we I don't want to put words in council's mouth, but we don't want to hear it from them. No more than, we don't want to hear any more than five minutes.
Tommy, or Tommy, sorry, Tony.
That's what you guys want to do, go ahead.
Tony, I, I believe that if we go back and review all of the citizens' comments. Most of them are shorter than three minutes.
True.
Right? So, so we are not really limiting the average person. We're not limiting most people. What we are trying to do is, uh, focus the comments to, so that they may be productive. Because I can sit here and I can ramble and I can talk for five minutes nonstop, but I bet you less than three minutes of it will be productive. Right? So we are, we are, and, and again, if it is really productive, if we as council are hearing great things. We can always engage and, you know, in that engagement, expand that time.
I would be absolutely in firm favor of keeping, keeping that, um, uh, protocol or tradition.
Yeah. Right? It's, it's in, it's, it is in here that if, you know, uh, discussion is excluded, yeah. At any council meeting excluding discussion time as mentioned above, right? So if the citizens' comment spurs on discussion, we, we have you know, in these rules, it says we subtract out discussion. And I know that when I'm running the clock, I do my best to pause it when there is back and forth. Right? Which is another reason why I don't like the, the red light, green light thing, because I don't know how to pause and how to do all that. So I just do it on my phone.
I'm working on it. Okay, so, I, I, and I'm not trying to take you over, Brian, but I know that there's, we have, you guys, legislation's gonna take us a while to get through. Um, I'm not in any hurry, but it is already almost nine, ten.
I see it.
We're only on one thing. So I was gonna ask Diane. Diane, if, if they went with option B, are you going to have a, we're not voting, but as a temperature check. And I'm not trying to call you out, but you would be one of the ones that do we change it to, to, to me, I heard more B, um. Are we okay changing it to be at this point? Do you guys want to think about it for a couple hours? Does anybody wanna, we can't conduct business via email, but again, we're not voting on anything. I don't know what you guys want to do, but I think we probably, I'm just trying to speed you guys up.
Or Diane, are you, are you comfortable drafting, taking this section and redrafting it to represent what we just discussed as option B? That citizens will have the opportunity to comment at a citizens' comments section. They will have five minutes. They can speak on whatever. Whatever they want. And then I think, do we have a sample agenda here in the Yeah, so in the order of business, you would just move citizens' comments from here to above legislation. And, and that's how that would roll. We can't quite hear you, Diane. We, we, I couldn't hear what you were saying because you were facing away from your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, no, I, I can do that. I, I'll take out the two things. Uh, and the, the two, the two things we've agreed to take out, the, the nine minutes and the other. I'll re, uh, rewrite it just a little bit to, I'll tweak it to option B and I'll move it in the agenda.
Thank you very much. Uh, and were there any other changes to rules of council that people brought as a, as a suggestion?
Yeah, um, yeah, I had a couple, um. So, uh, these are just kind of, uh, again, noting the time, um, if we, if we if we could just start with the top and we'll scroll down and the, the, um, just a few cleanup items, I think. Uh, one is, um, there's something about, um, a work-study.
Work slash study sessions.
Page five, I just, we, we don't really use that terminology. We don't do things that way. And I just thought we should probably just remove it because it's not really relevant.
Anybody have a problem striking the, 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 the phrase work-study and just using work such, instead of work-study session?
No, we, we have work sessions. No, it's just extra.
Yeah, getting rid of the study from that phrase.
I would just get rid of the whole paragraph and the whole thing because it's
We'd still have work sessions, though. What do you mean?
Down below.
It's not a work session. It's something else. That's why I'm saying we don't use.
Regular work-study sessions shall be held eight AM on the Saturday before the second Monday of each month. January through December, any work-study session will be scheduled for the third Monday. Uh.
Uh, okay, hold, hold on, hold on. Sorry about that. All right. Pardon me. I was looking at something else, so I, I beg your pardon. Okay, so, uh.
Study out.
Uh, yeah, uh, the, uh, coffee with council, just change it to resident forum unless you want to change it back to coffee with council. But I thought we just changed the word coffee with council to resident forum.
Uh, why don't we just get rid of that altogether and say occasionally council schedules an informal meeting where residents are invited to talk on any topic related to the village. And we can choose to name them however we want when the time comes.
Okay.
Nice, nice.
Okay, uh, then, uh, uh, let's see. The, and then I wanted, because Jesse's, is Jesse still here? And then, and just to clarify, in the chairs, the power to vote. Uh, the mayor shall have no vote except in the event of a tie vote. Does that apply to the village? Because I, every time we've been in a situation where uh, there was a, I thought there was an opportunity for the mayor to break a tie. Uh, I was told, no, that doesn't apply. So I was just curious as to when it does apply. Or does it apply to the statutory village?
I don't think it does, although let me, you know, let me check while we keep talking. I'll, I'll look up right now. I haven't had that question called on me. Because usually it's because I'm just thinking of how the, how a tie, when a tie would work, so there's an even number there.
Yeah, so you, you have, you have a piece of legislation and there are six council people, they're all there and it's split three, three. The mayor breaks the tie.
Yes, but every time this happened, when I've been in council, the mayor is not allowed to break the tie. It, it, and I don't know what's going on. I don't know if it's because it was an, an emergency vote that it wasn't allowed, or there was some reason why I was told, no, that doesn't count. So
Uh, seven, seven thirty-three point two four of the code. Uh, says the president, or the mayor is the president of the legislative authority and presides at all meetings, but shall have no vote except in case of a tie. So it does apply to statute really.
Diane, my recollection was that there were, uh, at, at least one and maybe two times that I recall uh, Mayor Eisentraut chose not to vote to break a tie, right? Uh, Mayor Eisentraut chose not to vote to break a tie, right? So the mayor can choose to abstain, but that's their own choice, not, not that they couldn't, but rather that they chose not to.
So they're allowed to, uh, that's kinda interesting, so they're allowed to, they're allowed to abstain from breaking a tie?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's their, it's their way of, 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 you know, yeah, you, you can abstain.
Their way of, their way of not being controversial, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so that is, that was a choice, uh, that I did not, I did not understand that, I thought that it was an obligation of the mayor to break the tie. But it, it's not an obligation to break the tie, okay?
No.
Okay, uh, then on the, um. Let's see, on the agenda, I was just, there's the two agendas, you know, the first and second meeting agendas. There is, uh, the thing about the, uh, this is a Jesse thing again, the roll call and compensation of absent members. Now, I've been told that, uh, this goes back to previous administration, that it was important for. Um, it to be called out whether the um, absent councilperson was going to be. Uh, paid for, for the meeting, um, in, in other words, or pay wasn't gonna be docked and that this was. ORC, you know, and so we were, we're supposed to be at roll call saying so-and-so. Is excused absence and will, you know, will not be docked for, will be compensated for this meeting or something like that. And we were supposed to actually say that out loud and I know we haven't been doing it and when we, for, for me, there's. Starting with, uh, the people who are only making fifty dollars a month, uh, which is. Have, are dropping off now and everybody will be at a hundred and fifty. So if docking someone a meeting would be seventy-five dollars now and it might be worthwhile from an accounting. Process to consider it, but uh, we, we just don't follow that uh policy. And I just didn't know what Jesse had to say about that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, if we haven't done it out of practice, I mean, you know, there's not any. There's not any recourse for anyone for us not doing it, but you are permitted under the statute if, if they miss the. If they have unexcused absences, they can be docked, but I would go ahead and start doing a roll call on that and, and calling out whether they're excused or not. If we're going to dock.
And I, I think the docking language is a may, not a shall.
Sure, that's correct.
And so we can choose to dock members if they're, have an unexcused absence, not that we must. Dock members when there's an unexcused absence, and then, then it comes down to how do we accurately represent. How much to dock, because is it really only for the two regularly scheduled council meetings? Or are we being compensated for our two regularly scheduled council meetings? Plus the potential three committee meetings plus, uh, you know, the potential informal meeting.
Yep.
Right, the, the two potential work sessions, and now with, it's not two, but we're up to five, seven. Plus whatever time I stay awake at night worrying about what the governor is going to come next.
I think.
The, the point is, 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 it's about the council meetings, I mean, as far as that I can see is. Because that is the voting body and if people aren't there to vote, that's, that's a problem, but that's the way I read it. It's not about all the other little things you do, and I'm not saying that we should, uh, dock, I'm just saying that. If i- i- circumstance would come up where someone was um repeatedly missing council meetings. And they weren't also not declaring their absence prior to the meeting, that uh, if you, if you don't at least. Uh, make it clear on the recording whether they are an excused absence or not. You will lose the opportunity to do anything about it at some point. So maybe just, we, we would just wanna make sure that the, the council president, uh, just make, uh. You know, we don't really, frankly, I, there is nothing in there that says a councilperson who is not gonna be able to, uh. Make a meeting needs to notify either the mayor or the council pro tem, president pro tem. Prior to the meeting in order to avoid any potential docking of, uh. Compensation, I mean, we don't have that in there, we probably should, we probably do want council members to call in. Prior to uh, missing a meeting, don't you think? I mean, that's, that's a professional thing to do.
Diane, there is a section in here about excusal from attendance at regular council meetings. A council member shall be excused from attendance at a regular or special meeting of council upon notification of the mayor prior to such meeting. If the council member does not notify the mayor of, of the anticipated absence and ask to be excused. The absence shall not, shall be noted as an absence without valid excuse pursuant to that code. Unless waived by two-thirds vote of all members, each unexcused absence from a regular meeting will result in a salary reduction. Uh, equaling two percent of the annual salary, the vote will be taken immediately after roll call is completed.
Which would put it at thirty-six dollars.
No, two percent of the annual.
Annual salary is eighteen hundred dollars, two percent is thirty-six dollars.
Alright, well, there you go, so do we, I, I think that the accounting efforts to dock someone two percent. Is probably gonna cost the village close to thirty-some dollars, like I don't think it's actually gonna save any money. Uh, and, but I do think calling out unexcused absences is a good thing. Uh, because ORC does have uh provisions that after so many unexcused absences of a councilperson. Uh, action can be taken to remove them from their seat. Is ten the statutory amount or could it be adjusted?
I thought it was two.
I did too, I'm, I'm shocked to see ten.
Yeah, that, that shocked me as well.
Five months.
I'm gonna step away for a moment, sorry, continue the conversation, I'll be able to hear you.
What's that, Tony?
It says here has been consecutive for ten consecutive regular meetings.
And that's five months, I mean, if we have to go unexcused. Or I, I guess it doesn't matter if it's excused or not excused, if you miss ten in a row. So basically, somebody can miss nine, come to one and then not come to him again, I mean, again, I, 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 we're, we're talking about things that people don't do. I mean, we've never had this, I understand we do this in case it happens because, you know, it is important. But I think ten is, i- if there's, if there's a reason that we have ten, I get it, but.
If it's not statutory, that's insane.
Statutory, it's not, we didn't make that up, it's, it's uh, what they allow, you know, what the state allows. But you're right, it is kinda ridiculous, but I do know that in the past, there has been. An instance where someone was not able to make meetings and they did not wanna, they did not want to step aside, so.
I apologize Diane, I started talking over you, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm done.
Um, I don't necessarily mind the ten because of what's attached to it. Council may declare a councilperson's seat vacant. But you know, it's, the, the consequence is council's just gonna say. Councilperson Bruger is no longer a, a member of this council and we need to appoint someone to a seat because we're kicking him off midterm. Um, and so, yeah, that's, that's a big consequence. So I don't mind that it's a big hill to get up to the top of.
Well, but ten meetings is ridiculous to allow that to happen, I mean, I think.
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree, it, can, I mean, is, is that what seven thirty-one point forty-five says is ten? I mean, does anybody look at it?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's ridiculous and it's still ridiculous, but if you look at it. That a, um. The council, you're, 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 you're removing them from their term, the term is four years, that's ninety-six meetings. So you're at ten percent, now the fact that it's, you know, has to be consecutive, but.
Well, couldn't you consider each work session and each meeting? You know.
As regular meeting.
As a regular meeting?
No, we, we, we define regular, there's regular council meetings, there are special council meetings, there are work sessions. And those are all defined as different things.
And since we don't have a charter and Brian has pulled up. Or section seven oh five point one three, I don't think we can change that.
We're stuck.
No, that's the salary.
That's the salary, there's a difference.
Look at the last sense of it, absence for ten succession of regular meetings shall operate to vacate this. The seat of a member unless such absence is authorized by the legislative authority, that's, that's in Ohio code, we have to keep that.
Yeah, no.
Now, that is. We could probably add. Right? Are we allowed to do that? Are we allowed to say that's what ORC says, but we wanna make it five or we wanna make it?
Can be. I know Jesse's trying to raise his hand, you're muted Jesse.
Uh, seven thirty-one point four five says that you can, council can declare a seat vacant for absence without valid excuse. If the absence is continued for two months. So that would be four meetings. And you guys could then declare him absent, declare the seat absent.
Right.
And then expel, expel the member with a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, and I think, I think the reason why I remember it being two meetings is six years ago, we only had one council meeting a month.
Right.
Um, the thing about the ten to remember is that that is ten successive meetings. So if you come, if you miss nine, come to one, miss nine, come to one, that never comes into play. Uh, and I think this is also successive, right? Uh, legislative authority shall determine its own rules, may punish or expel absent without valid excuse. Uh, where such absences continue for two months. So I, and this might be how we choose to interpret that, but that would mean they've come to no meetings. Be it work session, regular meeting, committee meeting, they've come to no meetings for two months. Because if they come to any one, then it hasn't been. Uh, continued for two months, right? There has been a discontinuous absence.
I mean, I'll be honest, I think if I read the first sentence of that statute that we can determine our own rules, we can say. What, what we mean by this is regular council, public council meetings, regular council meetings. And then if they don't come to four council meetings, four Monday night council meetings, then you could expel them under your own rules.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but if they pop in for a work session, we could write our own rules that say that doesn't count.
Right.
Yeah.
And of course, there is unexcused if. If a council person gets called in for a job or a shift during a council meeting and says, look, I'm sorry guys, I can't make it cuz. You know, we're really short staffed down at the ER. I, I, I took the example of myself for getting kicked off, Brian, you could, or David, you can take the, the missing.
Yeah, or, um, or, um, council person like costs. Yeah, council person likes costs could also be, uh, dragged someplace unexpectedly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think the whole point of it being for two months, I mean, i- if you, it boils back down. For me, it boils back down to you're either able to do, make the commitment or you're not, and if you, you know, Mark. He decided to go, you know, to his classes and we did everything that we could to accommodate it, and I think that that's. If, if you're willing to come to us and say, this is what's going on and I really wanna do this, I think that council's gonna be receptive to it. So I think it's, I think it's more about the fact of, you know, there's a lot of people that show up to these meetings, week after week after week. And then you have that one councilperson that extends meetings because they're asking all of the same questions that we've all been in meetings discussing. And I think it's, you know, uh, so that's where I'm at with that, and I say that as, as the mayor, I say it as a councilperson, I say it as whatever you want. Um, I, it wastes people's time, so if you aren't able to come to the meetings and you're not doing all of that, I think it's fair to get somebody else in there. So I think if it's excused, um, and again, Mark did exactly what he should have done, he, he worked with us, we all worked with him because it's important to him. And I think you see that with, with most people, I think it's the person that is just tying up a seat that doesn't really have the interest. Is what we're trying to avoid.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I, I do think that the thing that we actually have to do in all this is that we have to. Have on the record whether any absent member is an excused absence or not. And we have to dock the pay because this is a shall statement, not a may statement, so I was incorrect, everybody write it down. I was saying I was wrong about something, uh, that this is a shall, so we do need to be docking that two percent if somebody has an unexcused absence. From a regular meeting.
And we'll see if we can adjust the agenda to say it specifically the way that it is supposed to be read.
It says that the person shall be paid an equal monthly installment, it doesn't say that it, we shall dock them and.
For each absence, hold on, for each absence from regular meetings, the legislative authority, unless authorized by two-thirds vote of all members there are of. Shall be deducted a sum equal to two percent of such annual salary. So the first one says we're getting paid the same amount every month, the second point says. If you're, if you're unexcusably absent and two-thirds of the members don't vote to excuse you, then you will be deducted.
Yeah, I'm, I was wrong.
And I think my recollection, cuz we did this the last time I was on council, we picked this up and started doing it, is it's a real bummer because. Who's, who's, who wants to vote to say, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna take two-thirds of your salary. Especially when it was only fifty dollars a month, right? What's two percent of? Uh, you know, six, you know, so it's, you know, we're taking twelve dollars from you, it just seemed really petty and nobody liked it. But it is a shall statement, so we're just gonna have to do it. And be better about working the practice in.
Yes.
Um, while we were at agenda, cuz that's where this came, came from. Um, I did want to, I've raised it once before, uh, I would like to strike. The pledge of allegiance from the agenda.
And I'm, but I don't get to, I don't get to vote for it, so I think it needs to be a man.
I, uh, going around the room, I would like it to stay.
I, you would like it to stay is what you said Diane?
Yeah, stay.
Alright.
I'd like it to go.
Tony's, Tony's a strike it, so we're, uh, councilperson Bruger?
Uh, I'm okay with it going, I mean, I'm a elementary school teacher, I get to stand and do that every morning anyway, and, you know.
So that's, that's three.
Patriotism to me isn't really patriotism, I guess.
Yeah, uh, that's kind of where I am too, councilperson McNamara?
My thinking has evolved, um, greatly over the years on that as well, I would be very much in agreeance with the statement that. Mandated forced patriotism is not patriotism, uh, patriotism is, well, that, I'm not gonna get in some soapbox, but yeah. The pledge of allegiance is a poor representation of patriotism as a more educated. And forward-thinking understanding of it is.
Alright, so I think as a group, we have taken a temperature in the room. And the temperature of the room is to remove the pledge of allegiance from the agenda.
I mean, I'm not, I would not die on that hill, but I would be in favor of.
But we've, we've gone around the room and more people were like, yeah, we can remove it than there were, it should stay.
If you're gonna keep a release out of designate, who starts the darn thing off?
Diane, we can always try to put it back in January.
I think that is, uh, I, I, I gave my answer as a represent, representative of the. Citizens of the village, because I think it's an expectation among some, but I, um, I'm surprised that an Eagle Scout would have that to say. So, uh, maybe, maybe times have changed and, uh, maybe, uh, our. You know, for me, you know, uh, it's important for the citizens of the village to believe that this is a. A, um, a trusted, uh, you know, that, that, that council and the village government is a real thing. And that we follow, uh, you know, that, that we have some historical. Uh, i- i- it's just, it's just a my, it's a mind thing, so if, if, uh. If the majority of the residents would not be offended by the eliminating the pledge of allegiance, then. I guess that'll come up next, as, as, uh, mayor says that, that, that'll can come back up next year. If, uh, if the number of the new council members say, hey, wait a minute, where's the pledge of allegiance that's important to me, then they can put it back in, I guess, so.
And I'm, I'm not opposed to doing it, as, as I said, my thinking over the years has evolved on it, um. I, I, I definitely understand the place it has in many people's, you know, hearts and minds. And I still feel the same way to some extent, but. The mandation of doing so is what I would be against. I, I wouldn't propose to get rid of it.
So.
Yeah, you know, it used to be a matter of, I, I'm old enough, okay, so I guess, I think I'm the oldest person in the room. So. I will say that it didn't used to be hardship to say the pledge of allegiance, it was an honor. And if it's no longer an honor, then maybe that is, that is something that needs to be discussed and removed.
So here, so since we're, since we're speaking our piece and I'm the one who brought it up, I will say that as an atheist. I find the under God portion of the pledge of allegiance to be discriminatory, right? Uh, and in fact, discriminating other discriminatory of a protected class, a class that's protected by the First Amendment. Right? So to make me say that I am pledging to anything under a god is right out awful. Uh, secondly, I think that, uh, pledging, making a pledge to the federal body. As we were about to do the business of our local government is, uh, does us a disservice. Because the business of our local, local government should come before the business of our federal body. And those are my two reasons why I think it doesn't belong in our, in our business meetings.
So now we're getting a little political here, so I think we should probably.
I agree.
Move on.
So let's go to the next.
Okay, so, so here I am on the, uh, on the agenda, then, uh. I had left in there that welcome message, uh, and that should be taken out because we've decided that, that I was a little too expensive on that. So I just take out the, cuz we don't do it, it's off the agenda already. It's just in the, in the rules of council. And also take out EMS and fire because we don't do any EMS and fire report.
Yep.
Just, we're gonna start doing that. Um, and then, uh. Let's see. Uh, we talked about citizen comments and green card, where we, we're reordering that. Um, the, uh, only, uh, let's see. Uh, and then we already had the discussion on green card, which I had down here, um. The only other thing I thought of as I was watching the news and the, uh, uh, people, uh, were upset about. The anti-maskers was, and, and, uh, you know, actually doing, you know, teaching in school and all that, so. Is if we wanted to, and this is just a suggestion, um. In the event residents become unmolely, five-minute recess will be declared by the mayor or and or council president pro temp. And residents will be escorted outside and be brought into the council chambers one at a time to present their comments. I didn't know, I mean, it's, it's a stretch, but I didn't know cuz that's one of the, um, I can't remember which council. Uh, was in Ohio actually did that. Because i- it was a zoo and I didn't think that was a bad thing. So I mean, hopefully we would never use it. I thought. We wanted to stick it in there, maybe. We should, so.
I agree with you, Diane. I agree with you greatly. That is an option that it would be good to have and I hope we would never use.
I, I think it's good with a may and not a shall. I didn't hear, I wasn't listening closely enough if your language had a may or a shall.
Okay. Okay, may declare, okay, all right.
Are we taking out the welcome message? Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's what she said.
That's what I thought.
What was the welcome message?
Okay.
Oh, I had written this, y- you would have liked it, David, cuz you might kind of get. So, uh, I just thought that it would be, you know, this is when we had more audience and I think, you know, when you, when you have controversy, you always have more audience, so. Uh, but we had maybe five or 10 people showing up at a time and. I felt it was wrong for, it, it was like they were the enemy. I mean, the feeling was negative. And I thought that if, you know, that the council president pro temp, uh, if not the mayor, but the pro temp. Would, uh, acknowledge the audience at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you for coming.
Oh, that's awesome. I, I know I unofficially do that from time to time, but that's awesome.
So, you know, that, that's why I put it in there, but that was, uh, not, not appreciated. And so I, we, we, I took it up.
I feel it also takes the place of, there used to be an invocation before the meeting. And I think that, you know, we, it was a, a replacement for the invocation.
I am amazed that there was an invocation at this. Level, not, not that that's a bad thing, but I'm, I'm surprised that that was mixed in, um. But no, a welcome message, I don't see why we don't at least, you know, give a little minute to say, you know, hi, everyone, thanks for coming. Or I'll just keep doing it myself.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I, we can have a welcome message, but it should be extemporaneous and we can. Yeah, I don't know. I don't have a strong feeling either way.
Yeah, neither.
All right, so if, if we feel in the future that a welcome message is needed, we can always add it in or ad lib it as it may come.
Well, I don't mind if we ad lib it, I just, uh, thinking now acknowledging the, uh. Even, even when it's, cuz it's on, is to acknowledge and thank people who are even. I think the mayor has done that on occasion, it's just not routine. And I just think acknowledging, uh, the audience, whether it's. Online audience or in-person audiences, uh. Is it, is a good thing to do, it's just seems less adversarial.
I think, I think lately we've just been, I've been trying to do it at the end. Um, after they've made their citizen comments or whatever, thanking them for coming and thanking them for their comments. So that's kind of where. That's pretty much the only thing that I've done.
I think when people, people, especially people do show up and there are probably, if they haven't shown up before, they're kind of nervous and. It makes them feel like they belong there and they do.
Well, e- e- exactly. Even if you don't, you know, even if it's a little.
You know, and the, the thing is, is that many people have said they don't, in the past, that's in the past, have said they don't feel welcome. And so I just think that putting people at ease that have bothered to come out, especially the ones that have bothered to come out in person. Is a good thing to do, so. Okay, that's my two cents, all right.
And I agree fully.
Um, then, uh, let's see. Uh, that was, oh, uh, the other thing I had, and I know, uh, I think there, uh. The other thing I just wanted to propose and we can do this, we do have, do we have one more work session in December that we're?
Yeah.
And I want to talk to you guys about that before we get to the end.
So, uh, you know, I, I do feel, uh, I've felt strongly about this, but I haven't done anything bad, so it's on me, but. Uh, is that council, new council members should have an orientation. And, um, what I can do is I can, I can email my suggestions, but. I do feel like it should be a rule of council that, that new council members have to have, have to go through an orientation. Either before they start or within thirty days of their starting on council. Where it, all of these things, the rules of council and the code of conduct and all that is, is, is. And it's formally in the rules that this has to happen.
And I think that, uh, and maybe this is something we can have ready for the next one without what. You're a hundred percent, we're actually working on a packet. I'm going to be inviting all of them in. I'm going to ask them to stay for a few hours. And they don't have to. I mean, here's the other thing, I can't make anybody do this. I mean, here's the other part, like you're saying it's in the rules of council that they do this, but I could kind of give you like. This has been a topic that we've been talking about for the last three weeks, like we are putting together a packet, we are putting together like. A plan of the, these, we are already on it a hundred percent. Um, Monday was actually the day that we were gonna start putting, we've collected all this stuff that has been used over the years and we're gonna kind of pick and choose what we want to use with that. I don't want to waste this meeting doing it. So maybe you could send me your suggestions and then by the third reading, we can. If, if you guys are okay putting it in a handbook, that's up to you guys, whether or not you want it in the rules of council. But I'm going to be offering that to every new council person that comes in. I can't make them come in to do it unless it's in your rules of the council, I guess, is what we're saying. Um, but I'm definitely gonna be offering them to come in and asking them, you know, to. Give us a couple hours just to kind of show them what everybody does in the building. All of the above. So we are so on that and then you guys can make the decision if you actually want it in your rules of council. But I would love your suggestions, Diane, and if you could get those to me like really soon. Um, because I'm just kind of going on what I wish I knew when I started. So maybe if you guys, anybody that wants to add to it would be, I would be thrilled if you guys would send me some suggestions that. What do you wish you knew when you started? And actually put together something that's real when new council people start, cuz it's overwhelming.
So the only, the only thing I'll throw in there is that we should make it clear to that we let people know when. And let people know that the village will pay for the Ohio Municipal League New Council Person Training. And strongly encourage people to go to it to the earliest available session. Uh, I don't know that we can, I, I think we would have a hard time enforcing anything through rules of council saying. One must go through a, any kind of training. I, Jesse can opine that I, I'm wrong, but I think that would be a difficult thing to enforce. Yeah, Tony?
Is, isn't, and this is something that I, I mean, I forgot about is that, uh, uh, aren't we required to do public records training?
Uh, O R C, so. My recollection of that, and I think Jesse was gonna say what it is, so why don't I let him say, cuz I think.
Well, I. Not even statutorily, but I was going to, uh. Just propose, I mean, we can't really force people to go to the training like, uh, Brian said, but. Uh, I think, I think they are required to get public records training and what we typically do is, I don't know if Gene did it, but. We just in January of every year do, uh, like during my report, I'll do a public records training that, and that we present. Uh, my firm presents to the Ohio Municipal League on public records, so they don't even have to go to get that portion of it.
The, so my recollection is how, how it is that we don't, haven't been doing records, of more formal records ret- retention training. Was that we have, uh, by ordinance named the fiscal officer, our records person. And so they're the only one that needs the documented, uh, training.
Uh, yeah, you're, I, it's all coming back to me now.
Yeah, cuz I think, Tony, you're right, like, cuz I did the sunshine, I think it's like the sunshine law thing that you go on the website. And the reason, and I never did the one that Diane's talking about because it's always the week of spring break. And I've always been out of town every time they've done that, Ohio, like the one that's the closest to us. Um, because it, it, like the Columbus one or whatever, it's always the week of spring break.
And I got on council, believe it or not, not long before COVID wiped out all those meetings.
Right, right. So, but Diane, a- anybody that has suggestions, again, I may not be able to make people do it, but I'm gonna, I know that a couple of the new council people. Will come in and will appreciate it. I mean, I can't speak for all of them.
Definitely think setting up the program's a great idea.
Yes.
I don't think we need to put a will. I think we could put. If we want to put it in rules of council, we can put it that council must offer.
Yeah.
The training. And that compels us then to make sure we do it every year and have it for every four years or two years.
Every two, yeah.
We, we have it. We, we're responsible for having it and it gives us a fire on us to get it done. Without saying, oh, you're a new council member, you have to come to this training thing.
Right.
Yeah, I would be, I, I'd probably attend it because I know that COVID, cuz I was appointed in January and then we were. Getting all that stuff set up and then COVID, so I would enjoy.
Um, okay, it, so Diane, if you could do that, Diane did give us the calendar. I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at it. I did look at it. Um, I was gonna suggest that we do November fourteenth as the second November meeting. And I'm assuming that that's why we don't have two in November, cuz you were probably gonna ask if we wanted the fourteenth or the twenty-first. I'm cool with the fourteenth, I think that's better. Um.
I just didn't, I didn't color that in right, yeah, the fourteenth because they. Next week is Thanksgiving week.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, okay, anybody else, cuz, uh. And that means we don't have, uh, it means we don't have, uh, that's last year's, right?
Yeah.
You're looking at, yeah, last year's, so, uh, this year's, um, that's.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at the one Diane just sent out. Um, so the fourteenth just needs color coded, but other than that, I mean, I looked at the dates, I didn't see any discrepancies.
Um, this year seemed to be pretty, uh, easy here, not, the Wednesdays fell out pretty well as a rule. It was just, uh, July was, uh, July was the only. Tricky month, like, no, September also, but anyway, seemed to fall out pretty easy.
Yeah. So, I mean, no, I mean, I'm good with this, so if everybody's okay with this or if everybody can look at it, and then if somebody does see a date that doesn't make sense, like a holiday or something, let us know. Um, but then the fourteenth, it just needs color coded and we can get that added in there as well.
I'll do that.
Then Diane, you also sent out rules and, um, I don't know if this has anything to do with it. What was the purpose of this resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty? Is there something we needed to look at for this, for this?
It's the rules of, it's the rules of conduct. I thought we were looking at the rules of council, we should also look at the. Conduct and the other thing is, is the rules of conduct are, I, I noticed they're only in attachment A and they should be a separate document. And they, and they should be posted on the website and they should also, I mean, it shouldn't be that. It should be incorporated at the end of, I think, the, the.
Rules of count.
Right.
Cuz I can have her, once we get all of this fixed and it's passed in December, if you're okay, just waiting until December. We'll attach this to that and if there's any adjustments to this. Um, and I'm not trying to speed everybody up, I may get a phone call here in five minutes and I have to leave. So I have a call, I have an inspection being done at ten o'clock and if they can't get in, I have to go let them in. So, and they hope their key works is all I'm gonna tell you. Um, and I've known that was the case. We're almost ten o'clock. I don't know if you guys want to switch keys to go through legislation and then back to something else. Other than that, I'm in no hurry. If I don't get this phone call, I got all the time.
I think we should go through legislation because it's a pretty thick docket.
And especially, well, anyone where you, you. Uh, you're, you're doing a, and we haven't talked, if we haven't talked about it yet, you want to do it as an emergency, we should definitely do that.
There's a, there's gonna be a couple, but I think all of them are gonna be pretty quick and straightforward. So I don't know if somebody can share their screen. I don't have it on here.
I gotta pull it up.
Go through legislation real quick. Not real quick, I mean, I want you guys to ask whatever questions, but pull it up real quick.
Pulling it up, let's pick up on the first one, which although was an emergency, is a third reading, I believe, yes.
Yeah.
And that's fourteen twenty twenty-one and that's the, uh, contracting the financial advisor. To look at options for the, uh. The funding, the TIF in particular.
And the only reason for that is we've done the three readings, we've not had anybody scream, holler, throw fits. And that just gets them to be able to work on it now versus thirty days from now. You know, we're wanting to get some of these projects moved forward. Um, I had reached out to Jesse and asked him and, and Eric, you know, we all kind of talked about it, is there. Is there any reason to wait thirty days? Is there, so really, I'm leaving it up to you. I can remove the emergency. I don't want to remove the emergency. I feel like this is. Again, something that we're trying to get moved forward. It's five thousand dollars to get our finance, you know, our financial advisor to assist us. So at this point.
Fine with being an emergency, does anyone have any objections to that?
No.
Okay, moving on. Uh, sixteen twenty twenty-one, an ordinance updating the employee handbook and declaring an emergency. Uh, I'm looking at and I'm scrolling down, it's saying all part-time employees regularly scheduled to work ten to nineteen, this is the, the one.
We're changing that, so I'm gonna stop right there. Okay, we're gonna, here's what we want to propose, and this is where these are gonna take a little bit longer. Um, but if everybody just kind of wants to speak their piece and then we'll take your recommendations, get it to the best of our ability and bring it to you guys on Tuesday, you guys can say what you guys want to say there. Um, as you can see, this is one of the, one of the options, maybe I'll go back. This is one of the options we presented. Um, after talking to, um, Kim and. Oh, my God, Leah, um, that does make it a little bit of a headache. Um, scroll down just a tiny bit more to. The part-time employee scheduled ten, oh, no, that is right. Okay, well, yes or no? This is option one. Option two is typically everybody just, part-time people get four hours. Um, but if you work twenty hours. So this is for the people that work ten to twenty hours. We did three hours because it's less than the people that work twenty hours, but honestly, it is gonna be more of a headache for Leah to do this. Because she's gonna have to average out the last four pay periods every single time there's a pay to see whether or not they get it or not. So it, again, it goes back to your, um, your comment that somebody made earlier about the docking of pay, the six, you know, is it worth it? Is it not worth it? So it would make life easier if we just did anybody that works ten hours instead of twenty hours and over. The reason for this is we do have a couple part-time people that we are trying to keep under twenty hours. We're trying to keep them under twenty hours for budgeting purposes. It's not really their fault, so now they're not getting anything. Um, so it's just, again, it's, we would like to do this for our part-time employees, simple as that. Um, the ten to twenty hours, three hours is less than the four, four would make Leah's life easier. I'm not gonna live or die by either one, this doesn't affect me. I'm not gonna live or die by either one, this doesn't affect me, but I think it's important that we do this for our employees. If you guys wanna go around the room really quick and just, a- again, I don't wanna, i- if this becomes a bigger topic, I don't wanna rush anybody, but this is what it is.
Is this extra time?
As of right now, our part-time employees, un, sorry, under, just so everybody knows this, under twenty hour employees do not get any holiday pay. So, our maintenance that works under twenty hours, anybody, any part-time person that works under twenty hours does not get one penny on holidays. So, if they work an average of nineteen hours, they are not getting holiday pay. And this would change that for anybody ten to twenty hours, they would get three hours instead of the four. Or we can just make Leah's life easier and do everybody four, I mean, how much are we talking? I mean, most of them, it's not overtime, it's not anything like that, these are part-time people. Um, so that's, that's basically what we're talking about.
Oh, give them four, be good to the American worker.
No, this, these are part, uh, these are part-time employees, regularly scheduled. Uh, but obviously, they're not regularly scheduled because it's supported by, supported by average hours worked for the last four pay periods. If they were, if they consistently worked twenty hours a week, then you wouldn't need that extra jum- mumo jumbo in there about averaging over a period of time. Anybody, anybody who's.
This is for like the people, okay, so just for example, we have a, we have a part-time maintenance person right now that's averaging ten to fifteen hours, because that's what we need them for. So, this, they're not, they don't work twenty hours a week, they don't average twenty hours a week, this is just so.
So, Mayor, if I can jump in, if I can jump in real quick. So, basically, the, what happens Diane, and, and members of council is, where we run into the real problems of holiday pay and people's, you know, time, it comes in, you know, where we've got these, you know, holiday periods, pri- primarily Thanksgiving to Christmas time, on which we've got multiple days and, you know, things of that nature, and so, if, if, even if an employee wanted to work on a day that was a designated holiday, the problem is, is that they get paid one and a half times, so, so from a management standpoint, they try to, no, no, uh, from a holiday pay standpoint, that's what's, that's what's in the system, so, so that's, that's one problem, uh, so whether it's Christmas, the day after, or Thanksgiving the day after, whatever's designated, if it fell within their normal schedule and their time they were out there, they would get one and a half, even if it's a special meeting, so, when you schedule people off like that too, with, if the village isn't open and they can't work, that misaffects your folks' schedule, so this is merely a way to try to even it up. Um, you know, and even twenty hour people, the problem is, is that i- if you're a twenty hour person, and when I was a twenty hour person, I can just give this as an example, if you go to take a vacation because there's no vacation time, right? So, you get, you get essentially just a few hours on a given week, that goofs your average up kinda significantly, and you fall below twenty hours from an average, and there's no way to catch it up. You're not gonna end up coming back and working thirty or thirty-five hours, you know, the following week to try to, to try to make it up in the same pay period. Um, you know, for a variety of reasons, and i- what happens is, is you are, you are perpetually screwed during that time period of, of the average, and you fall under the twenty hours and you get zero from the standpoint of any, a- any type of time for holiday periods, right, or vacation time, or whatever it is, however you're averaging it, so, there's a couple of problems, so the proposal comes in two parts, one is, you know, and I asked Leah about this the other day, I had assumed, I had assumed Paycor automatically averaged the stuff out, or there's a button and you can add a column, but apparently Paycor is not that user friendly. Um, it won't just give you, uh, a designated average, so it becomes a, um, a hand Excel type, you know, calculation for the finance folks every, every time they've gotta go through this, and once you get into, you know, a bunch of part-time employees all across the board, it becomes difficult, so you have, you know, the, the suggestion is two options, either, you know, you put them through more work, or you give them a straight timeframe. I'm personally, you know, not opposed, you know, just from a staff standpoint, if you've got a ten-hour person and they've been hired as a ten-hour person, then you just, there's nothing that says you can't give them, hey, I'm gonna give you your, your quarter time vacation day, which is two hours, or, or holiday pay, I'm sorry. If you're, if you're a fifteen-hour employee or under twenty between, you know, whatever that number is, you get three. Right, you don't have to go through the whole average thing either, so you, you have a few flavors you can try, that's all.
So, I think with this, um, because again, we are at ten o'clock, is there anybody that is set on three hours, is there anybody, and, and, and don't take this wrong. I'm going to present this legislation in the best of our ability, based on some of your guys' feedback, and you guys do get to vote for it, so I don't wanna sound like a smart aleck on here. Um, uh, this is, this has been brought to us, this is something that's been requested, it's something I'm totally fine with. So, I think my question to you guys to make this more appealing to the majority of council is, is anybody stuck on the three hours, is anybody stuck on the four hours, again, you can vote, no, we're not voting. But would anybody like to see something different in this legislation before we get to the first reading, second reading, because as you can see, we're trying to do this quickly. We know that we need a lar- a large amount of, um, votes to do this, so we would like to present it in a positive way that's. So, is there anybody that has any suggestions for this legislation, or what they would like to see, and I don't know if we wanna start with Brian, and just kinda go through.
I think, I think I need just to clarify the thought, right, so, what I'm reading here is that, uh, as it stands today, an employee who's scheduled for twenty hours a week or more, they get four hours of holiday pay if they're not scheduled to work on a holiday.
Correct.
Right, and what we are adding is that a part-time employee who is scheduled for more than ten hours but less than twenty, the proposal is that they would get three hours of holiday pay, provided they're not scheduled to work on the holiday.
Correct.
Okay, uh, and so, there is a bit of an accounting pain in the butt to that. So, there's sort of a, a third option of just saying four hours of holiday pay, just to make accounting easier for that second category of employee, the, the, the harder time people, if you will. Um, so, my first question is, how many employees fall into that ten to nineteen ninety-nine an hour category, nineteen, ten to nineteen hour category?
As of today, I would say two.
Two.
As of, um, you know, and the other thing that I would, and, and again, don't take this wrong, but in the winter months, it could be three. Because if we're gonna take the average, because our additional maintenance person may only be working fifteen, sixteen hours, so, you know, all of these Christmas and New Years and all of that, our person that's been working their butt off all year may not get it, so, I mean, there's, there's a lot of this that goes, there's, there was, there's been a lot of thought put into all of these, is what I'm gonna say, cause you're gonna see another one here a little bit.
The rea- the reason why I asked that question is that I was just trying to wrap my head around the total number of hours we're paying. Right, so even if we round up from three and call it four, what we're really saying is for these more part-time employees, right, the harder time employees that there are at most four, so we're talking about paying out twelve to uh, sixteen hours worth of pay, uh, to, to, uh, mark the holiday.
Right.
Is, is what we're saying.
Correct.
I don't have a problem with four, I don't think that, that, the, the delta between twelve hours and sixteen hours sure doesn't seem like a, like a hardship to me.
I agree with Brian.
Okay.
Put it on a calendar.
I just, just, uh, a question and, and clarification, and, and so, for the, um, during the summer, with the, with the pool people.
No, seasonal is not going to be included, and if you guys would like it to say.
It's seasonal, seasonal, uh, an actual technical qualification.
Seasonal is listed on our, um, and maybe this is a Jesse question, but we have them listed as seasonal employees. Not part-time employees.
Yeah, so seasonal is a separate category of employment, and therefore they don't get our part-time employee.
Correct. Because there would be, and, and just as an FYI, there would be three holidays in that, if we had to do that, and that would be a, that would be a decent amount. So, I mean, it's a fair question, and I would have no issue doing like a little, uh, you know, an asterisk type thing, seasonal, you know, seasonal employees do not qualify for holiday pay. I would have no problem putting that in there, just as a triple cover our butt.
Yep, that's fine. I'm good with that. Spenders and belts.
And I hear from Mark for two seconds, just cause I wanna get, make sure that I.
I know, I'm okay with it, I mean, I, I do look at it, okay, so if we have two employees that's eight hours per, excuse me, uh, eight hours for a holiday, but there are eleven holidays, so that's eighty-eight hours of, of time. Just to put it in perspective.
So, I, I know that, uh, in, in just, you know, the thing that triggered in my mind was when, uh, I, I remember there being complaint when the maintenance person, but it isn't about, it's about the fact that the maintenance person worked uh, got time and a half, and I, I, and I don't, I don't quite unders- I never understood that, because, but maybe that maintenance person was working more than thirty hours a week, on average.
I would assume so, cause he was by himself, but I.
Because, you know, Eric had mentioned time and a half, and I, I can't imagine a ten-hour employee, is this a, unless it's a government thing, because certainly in private business, anybody making less i- is not getting time and a half.
Yeah.
Working ten hours a week.
I would assume back then, there was definitely the possibility of that person going over hours, because they were by themselves.
Okay.
There's a very good check.
I might say, the only thing I might say about it is, can we get two readings on this instead of one?
Yeah, I, I, I'm uncomfortable with, with just though, I.
Now, it's one reading in past, it looks like.
So, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, if we did it as an emergency, we could definitely do it, um, it's just the following week, because, I mean, again, we've got a bunch of holidays coming up, so that was the whole, that was the push behind it. Um, but, uh, yes, I mean, in my opinion, I don't think that there's any issues, because it's still before the holidays, and if we do it as an emergency, and again, if somebody has a suggestion or anything like that, feel free, but I don't have an issue with it waving the third reading and doing it as an emergency, and doing two readings, I don't see any issue with that.
I would want at least that, yeah.
Yeah, two readings is better.
I, I like that, two rings is better, and then I can.
Absolutely.
Put my HR hat on and think about this for a minute, cause I.
There you go, cause you guys are gonna have another hat to put on once you get to the next one, okay, I'm good on this one to construct, if you guys wanna go to the next one.
Yep, alright, oh, moving to the next one, seventeen twenty twenty one. Uh, current expenses, is this next year's, uh.
That's a budget. Yeah, don't ask me questions.
There we go, attached underneath it is the budget outline.
And the finance committee was in there with me, so hopefully they can help, my mind's kinda crazy, but we did go over this in the finance committee.
Has this changed?
I mean, not that I'm aware of, we could double check.
I'd be surprised if it hasn't changed, I mean, I would think that she, but anyway, I, I just wondered, uh, I'll, I'll compare it against what.
Let's, yeah, let's compare it, um, definitely bring, uh, feel free to email, because a lot of times I can just, we can, you know, carbon copy Kim on it, and she can answer those questions. This has three readings, so this one, I'm not trying to sound like we're trying to rush, because I, we'll have plenty of time, we have the December meeting as well. If we need another finance meeting to go over all of that, I'm sure Kim would be more than willing to do that. Um, and then, but again, we definitely have the time to ask questions, but that was gone over in the, um, finance committee meeting, and I'm not aware that anything changed from that meeting, but I, I could, I, I wouldn't promise.
Is there, we talked about adding a line in the pool for a pool savings fund for building towards replacing the pool and all that, and I'm not seeing that on this.
So, that, that would be one of the questions that I'll ask her.
Yeah, that might actually require legislation to create that fund though.
Okay, exactly, and that, and this is just for, um, I believe the general fund too, so I don't know that it would show up on here.
Okay.
I don't know, I mean, it's a great question, and we'll find out.
Just looking through it real quick, that was the only thing I saw.
Okay, so I'm gonna move you guys to ordinance eighteen dash twenty twenty one, this is where this might get a little, um, yeah, so, as the current.
I'm just scrolling down to the.
You're good.
Actual legislation. Sixteen, seventeen, oh, there's a whole lot of, there's eighteen, go ahead.
Okay, so there's eighteen, this is, um, every two years we have to pass this, this is nothing new. However, we have a new addition in here, and the finance committee is gonna know what's going on in here, but I'm gonna totally throw you guys for a loop here in a minute. So, we sent this packet out, I love not having the meetings until Tuesday, because it gives me Saturday and Monday to make some adjustments for this, as well as administration and everything, so, um, for the record, I do like the Tuesday meetings. Um, if you scroll down to the X's, stop right there. So, just to give everybody that doesn't know what this document is, this is done every two years, so anybody that's newer did not see this last year. Um, it's, this is typically done for two years. As long as it doesn't, as long as our insurance does not go up over ten percent, which you can see that in section ten. So, this is our second year, so we're bringing it, it did not go up over ten percent, but this is the year that we have to do it. Um, so, our insurance rates are set, didn't go up that much, great. Um, so this is your normal ordinance that we're doing, however, we have been talking about part-time insurance, um, we, for part-time employees. There is, in section ten, part-time employees who work irregularly more than X, um, because we've been working on numbers, I know Brian had asked to see some numbers. The issue with doing numbers is, I'm gonna toss you guys a couple of numbers and let you guys kinda think about it, but I'm gonna take section ten, I'm gonna take this part-time employees out. I am going to create a completely new ordinance on Monday. You guys are gonna see a new ordinance that's gonna look very similar to this, um, but it's only gonna talk about part-time employees. Because I do not want this part-time employee thing to throw you guys, because this needs passed before the end of the year. Because this is for our insurance, um, and if you, yeah, I think this has three readings too. So, in the finance committee meeting, we have been talking about a part, offering part-time employees insurance. That doesn't mean we're paying for all of it. Um, the current discussion is to offer part-time employees who work more than X amount of hours, which we've not determined that number yet. We are thinking an average of twenty hours. Um, we might do fifteen, but we're thinking at the current time, because an employee has to work so many hours to be able for it to be taken out of their paycheck, common sense. Um, so we're thinking that if we do twenty hours, this is what my goal is. Part-time employees who work more than twenty hours per week will be required to contribute fifty percent. Okay, I knew this, okay, we'll see if they call back, um, and I think we're, gee, I hope I don't have to go. Um, part-time employees who work more than twenty hours per week on average for the year um, will be able to buy into our insurance at fifty percent. Why a year? Um, because it's a lot to do for an employee that comes in and works a month and then is no longer here. Uh, we are stuck with canceling insurances, maybe being stuck with a whole month of a bill. Um, what if an employee, what if a part-time employee is out for two or three weeks because they're ill? Again, they're not gonna have, if we start the insurance right away, they're not gonna have any sick time built up or anything like that. An employee that works over twenty hours a week, or at twenty hours a week, starts to accumulate sick time, they start to accumulate stuff, so after a year, um, we feel like we would have a cushion.
Well, I think it's a great idea you pulling that out of there. Cause that is, and then, what you, because that also means that if you decide it's not working or not worth it, you can, you, you've just got that one separate resolution to take back.
So, I think my question to every, now, Brian, I have no problem, like, I actually do have some numbers that I can toss you. So, here's, here's a couple of things that I will tell you, and then we can move, like, I can kinda get the temperature of everybody. Um, we're doing this because we do have, we do, I, I, I'm just gonna be blunt and say, we have an employee that has been with us that really is in need of insurance, it doesn't have the ability to get it. Um, this would be a very helpful way to do it, but, you know, we can't just do it for one, we have to make sure that we're dotting our I's, crossing our T's, because as it sits, um, technically, we would only have one part-time employee as of today, that would qualify, that's been here for a year, that needs it once it now, would we extend it to, here's the other part to this. We would not extend this to spouses, we would not extend this to family, and they would not get an HSA. So, there is even more, and I'm sure you guys have more questions, we, we have spent hours and days on this, as well as in the finance committee meeting. So, that's kind of some of the things, now, I'm not saying you guys don't wanna offer some of that stuff, but I'm saying as a financial part, the person that needs this and wants this is okay with, my understanding is they're okay with the way that we're doing this, but we also just wanna make sure we're dotting our I's and crossing our T's, because three years from now, we could have seven part-time employees. So, to put a budgetary thing, um, I don't know if you guys want me to do this on public record, but, and I don't wanna do it without everybody. Um, wait a second, but.
You probably, you probably don't wanna do, if you're going to say anything that might be presumed to be prejudicial towards a certain class, you probably don't wanna say it on.
No, I, I was saying like cost of insurance, so you guys could get an idea, I'm not saying, I mean, no, uh, there's.
You know, that's, yeah, the costs are fine on public record. You know, that's, yeah, the costs are fine on public record, but, so what I will say, just in, in comment of what you've said thus so far. I, I like the idea of making our, making insurance, insurance available to part-time people. Better in the greater scheme of things, looking forward that we may have seven part-time people in the future. Then I like it to sell the idea that we got a person now who is in need. Like as a, as a, as a public work, I think, uh, you know, and as a, as a corporate entity of, of a village, I think that. Providing for our part-time employees is good, right? Providing this benefit. May help us attract talent in the future because we've had those problems, but it doesn't, it doesn't help me a whole lot to say that we're. You know, we're aiming to help one person in particular.
No, and, and it's not fair to say that. Let me say it this way. It was brought to our attention from a part-time employee, that this would be great if we had it. And so that's what started, uh, and so I don't mean it that way, um, and it's not that the other ones wouldn't qualify at some point. And if they do qualify, perfect. Um, so no, I, I would say, you know, sometimes I don't have my words perfect and everybody already knows that about me, so that's great. Um, but it was brought to our attention because we do have, we do fall short in some places. And this was something that was brought to our attention. Is this something that we could look at? And you know what? If an employee comes to us and says, is this something we can look at, we're going to. Um, just like if council comes and says, can we look at something? So, so yes, it was brought to our attention from one particular employee and we're not doing it. It, it is better in the long run to try to hire maintenance people next year, um, that we want to keep long-term. You know, we're looking for people to keep long-term. We're not looking for the high turnover and this, I think it would be a big push for that. My, my bad choice of words up.
Problem.
Yeah, yeah, I, I love, I love everything you're saying. I mean, you know, pardon my Bernie Sanders-esque outburst about ten minutes ago, but yeah. Making, making things better for, you know, the, the American worker at every extent that we can is. Frankly, in my opinion, a moral obligation, and this is another way of helping to fulfill that, so I'm happy with it.
Alright, is there anybody that doesn't like the, and Diane, I know you were just trying to say anything, so let me let you say it and then if there are any, anybody has any problems, let me know.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, I, I, for me, I would need to absolutely see the numbers. Um, I know you guys have been working on this, so you, you must think the numbers make sense. I, I'm not sure how they make sense, but. Anyway, I would just like to, I would like to see the numbers. I do know that usually insurance is, uh, too expensive. Uh, to even be considered, uh, uh, for a full, many low-end full-time people, let alone. I mean, I, for years I've seen people, you know, forego insurance when they shouldn't. Even to, you know, because they just can't afford it. Uh, it's just hard for me to understand how. Someone working ten hours a week in, in a maintenance position, how they could afford insurance, period. Uh, so I'd just like to see the numbers on that.
And that's something that we can either, I can shoot out just how much we pay a month and, and the, the point to it. It, it, yes, it's a cost of the village. I, I, I wanna make sure that that's extremely clear to everybody. If they're only paying fifty percent, then obviously we're paying the other fifty percent. But it's the cost balance of trying to get, um, and, you know, good employees that wanna stay and, you know, contribute to the village. So having a long-term employee definitely outweighs four employees over a six-month span. So, you know, training somebody and doing all of that, so there is definitely a cost to it, uh, you know, if they're only paying fifty percent, that means the village is paying fifty percent. And that's why we had talked about no HSA, no this, this, this. Again, if you guys have, you know, a strong feeling that no, we should be giving them HSA. These are just the discussions that we've had as a financial, you know, making sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's for future. Again, Brian, like if, like I said, I will stick with that. We have to make sure that this is something we can afford if we have seven part-time people, because we're not gonna pick and choose who can do it.
Can we, I, I think that we, I think those numbers are important. I think we should bring those numbers to a finance committee this meeting this month.
Yes.
And we'll schedule that on Tuesday.
Beautiful.
So, so that we can know when you need to have the numbers so that we can review them in a finance committee meeting. So that we can make a recommendation from finance regarding this or not. But this piece of legislation.
We have to start the first reading, just as an FYI, in order for it to happen in January.
We, we can have a first reading with X's, that's fine, but that's a separate piece of legislation from this one, because you are. Cutting that out from here, developing a second one, and this one is just basically then becomes the pro forma. Every two years, we gotta say, yes, we're maintaining insurance.
Yes.
Okay, moving, moving right along. Okay, moving on from that one. That's continued. Okay, nineteen twenty twenty one. Day in the wage and salary ranges, the number of employees and positions for the village of Minerva Park.
This is a document that's done every single year. Once again, there are adjustments on there. Um, minimum wage has gone up. We have adjusted the salary and pay ranges of a lot of everything. Um, as you can see, we've changed the lifeguards, we've changed all of the, we've changed everything. The police department, um, the patrol officers, um.
I can't see what you, where does it show where you, what you.
Oh, I don't, I'm not seeing it either. I'm just talking.
Okay, okay. I, I, you know, I, really, I mean, to just present this without presenting the before and the after. I, I just, I mean, I can go back and dig up the last one and do a compare.
Diane, it reflects the changes here, from and to.
No, no, it's not. It's not what that is.
That's the lowest pay.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I'm sorry, I was misreading this.
Yes.
Um, I know, everybody does, including me, uh, but this is the way they do it, so it always catches me as well. Well, it isn't, it isn't what it's.
Right, well, this, this is also a first reading, right?
Correct. So as far as that goes, you guys are more than welcome to go pull it up. Any questions that you guys have, let me know. We have another, um. We were talking about a finance meeting and all of that, so I think like Brian's trying to get done with this meeting tonight too, so we can all move on on a Saturday. So, but that is what it is. It is a document that has to be done at the end of every single year. This isn't anything new, but every single year, of course, there's adjustments.
Hold on, uh, just might I suggest that since we're, this is a first reading, and it needs, pardon?
Yes.
Right, and it needs to be done by the end of the year. That's, that's great. Can we bring the information that Diana was requesting, what the, what those changes are to the finance committee meeting?
Yes.
So that they can be discussed.
Absolutely.
That, that's the right place to air those things out, so that if there needs to be changes, that's where those changes. Uh, would be, would be socialized.
Yeah, and they're all pretty minor.
I'm sure. I'm sure it's all minor and very reasonable, but it should be, should be clear at, if to nothing else to the finance committee.
Exactly.
Alright, moving along. Okay, twenty twenty one thirty two, resolution. Uh, allowing the mayor and fiscal officer to know various recurring contracts. This is just that normal one we get of all the. Contracts, it's just a second reading. Anyone have anything to say about that?
Nope.
Nope.
Alright, twenty one thirty four, resolution from the mayor's appointment of Matthew Clark as a full-time police officer. This is just getting someone off their, excuse me, probation period, correct?
These are two new hires, FYI, we've hired a new lieutenant. Her name is Tammy Phillips. We have a new patrol officer, which is Matthew Clark. Um, both of them have started. We swore them in on November first. Um. Um, um, um. We used to do these as waiting the reason, readings and passing them as an emergency. Last year, everybody decided that they really didn't wanna do that. Um, then Tiffany made the mistake of forgetting to do, um, if you guys recall. Um, I forgot to do new officers when we hired them. And in talking to Jesse, Jesse, you know, Jesse and I kinda went over it and he goes, you know, it, no, it's not a big deal. Um, however, if something were to have happened in the time in which we hadn't approved, the council hadn't approved them, there could be issues. So I have gone back to waiting the readings and passing them as an emergency. Jesse did send out, and I don't know where mine went. Like, I, I don't know why I can't find any of that stuff, but I can't, um. There is. There we go, um. If you guys look at the chat from Jesse, Jesse says the emergency language for hiring full-time officer is not required, but in my opinion would be. Would be to pass it as an emergency there, so there is no strange overlap, period. So him and I had talked about that before and it is in the best interest of the village to pass these as an emergency, so they are in fact appointed police officers full-time. That the village council has accepted. That's my opinion, that's how I take it. Um, we can go back and take it out, we can go, and I do see emergency is spelled wrong in there and I don't know how many times it's spelled wrong, so we'll make sure that gets fixed. Um, but that is something that I think that we should be doing in case, you know, one of them gets into some sort of accident or something like that. And they've never even been appointed. I mean, yes, they've signed their paperwork, but you guys haven't accepted them. So, I would prefer we not wait forty-five days to, you guys to accept them.
No, I thought we also, uh, I thought we did something in ninety days after their ninety-day probationary period.
Six months. But that's an internal probation. That's not.
Right, it is, and so, and so you're saying that the fact that it got tied to a council procedure was incorrect. And we're correcting it now.
No, I didn't do that. I, I'm saying we never, we never did the first pa, this is the first set of paperwork confirming my appointment. So until you guys confirm my appointment. If we do three readings in forty-five days at this point, or three readings and, um.
So, so Scott, so this is your confirming, I don't think we were, so we weren't doing both, we should have been, I don't remember having. I don't, just don't remember having two. I just remember the ninety, the ninety-day one.
We always do this, that, no, this is a fact. We always do the first one. This is the one I think that's important to declare as an emergency, because this is your, this is you confirming my appointment. At six months, then do another one, and I don't think that one's necessary, because that's an internal probation. I don't think that that one's necessary to declare that was an emergency. So no, there are in fact two, every single police officer, we passed two pieces of legislation, and FYI, we've gone back to make sure that those were all done.
Okay.
So.
Don't we have more new people or we only have two, we're still two?
You will see a third one within the next two weeks.
I'm okay with getting it and passing it as an emergency. I mean, as mentioned, it's just saying, yes, they are an official police officer. And then the department has its own, yes, you are, but you're on probation for six months, at which point we can make a decision if. You don't have to worry about each being told on a Monday, don't bother coming back tomorrow.
So yes, that's, a, and, and yes, we have no issues, no problems. It's just this was, uh, this came up the last time when I forgot to do it. Um, and they just thought it would be in the best interest of the village to get them confirmed. But again, when we get ready to do the six month. Um, to get them off of probation, I don't, I don't think there's a necessity to do that when it's an emergency and waive the readings, because it's an, like. In my opinion, and maybe Jesse will disagree, it's an internal probation.
Yeah, fair enough.
I could, I could, I could agree with doing this one of these emergently, just to get everything all squared away legally and then.
Yes.
Then on the, then on the six-month one, I could do my thing with chief. That, that's fair.
Yeah, because that's when you would want to, because.
Yeah.
That's the six months. So absolutely. Uh, so that was the point behind that, and I'm done with that. I mean, it's just up to you guys whether or not you wanna do it or not.
I'm fine with doing it, I mean.
I don't have any concerns.
This person got hired and we, we, we recognize that. Does anybody have concerns? Speak now or hold your peace. Alright, moving along. Uh, next one is rules of council, first reading, and of course, we're still working on what those rules are actually gonna look like. But getting the ball rolling as the, uh, thing goes.
Diane, on that, just make sure we have the most updated version and we'll get it replaced everywhere when this passes in December.
Yeah.
That would be awesome.
That looks like that's the, the end of legislation. Uh, we had discussed adjourning to an exec, oh, yes.
Okay, it is there, but there's also gonna be another piece that is listed in the agenda. Um, and it's a supplemental appropriation. It has, it's a very large amount. It has to do with the TIF and it's not in the packet yet, because it's not ready. So it's, it has to do with the TIF. That's all I can tell you and we, it's gonna be an emergent, or it's not gonna be, we're gonna be waiving the readings and everything, because the TIF payment needs paid. And I'm under the under, yeah, so it, it's basically, we, we got money, we gotta send it.
Got it.
But I'll get.
We got money because it gets collected to us, but it's not ours.
So I think it's in there something, somewhere, but.
I didn't see anything.
It's coming.
Alright.
Did I miss something executive session when I got my call?
No, so I think that's gonna be the next thing that they're gonna, I'm not sure where we're going with all this now, so.
Well, what I was gonna ask is we are, we are late, uh, and legal counsel has dropped off the call. The intention was to adjourn to executive session to discuss the resident complaint that has been, uh, voiced regarding Eric Fisher. Um, I will say that my own comfort level would be, I would prefer to do these things with legal counsel present. But if, if, you know, if, uh, you know, we wanna make that motion, we can, we can vote on the motion. And if we have a majority say, yes, let's adjourn, we can adjourn. Otherwise, we can put it on the agenda for Tuesday. Does that sound like a fair way about this?
I would be more comfortable on Tuesday if that's not hurting anyone else's feelings.
Yeah, so what I'm proposing is I will make the motion and we vote, right? So I'll make the motion to adjourn, right? We will have a roll call vote. And if you think now is fine, feel free to vote yay. If you think Tuesday is better, vote nay and we will put it on Tuesday's agenda.
Which also doesn't mean you have to go into executive session on Tuesday if you don't feel the need.
If they don't, but if everybody doesn't vote, or majority doesn't vote for it, then no, you don't.
I, that's what I was pointing out. I, I, I just wanna make sure that we don't have to go into executive session if people don't feel the need to go into executive.
Or are you saying that if people wanna discuss this in, in a public forum, is, I mean. Mayor Hughes, this is, this is your, your employee and a complaint lodged against your employee. If you, if you'd rather.
I, I think I'm, 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 I don't know what the complaint is.
I have made my complaint very clear.
Well, you're talking about.
Hold on, this is your complaint and not the, not the, not Roberto Segovia's complaint?
I, I didn't know that there was a written complaint. The, I'm not sure exactly what the complaint is.
Alright.
Guys, you wanna be real careful about this.
Yeah, so, so hold on. I think that, Tony, you've just confused me. Because when we just, when this was discussed over email, it was, you had made it clear that it was regarding a residence complaint. Not your complaint. So if it is your complaint, before we would adjourn to executive session. I think it would be good to have that complaint clarified. Does everybody agree?
And traps in writing. Isn't it in the email that I freaking put out?
Tony, you, you raised two things. One was you didn't understand, you didn't have clarity on what the village planner's duties are. And that's a discussion that should be had in open session. You also raised a concern that a resident had lodged a complaint regarding our current village planner. And that complaint is something that should be discussed in executive session.
Well, let's just clear it up. It's my complaint, okay? Is that enough? Isn't that enough?
So with, without, so, but I don't know what your complaint is. So is your complaint that you don't understand what the village planner's duties are?
No.
Okay, then.
That is, that is a concern, that is a concern, but that's not my complaint.
Okay, so you have a complaint regarding the, uh, behavior of the village planner, not their duties.
Right.
Okay, so, so now I have a clearer understanding of what, what the discussion is. Uh, and I think the same proposal is on the table, because again, I think this is best done with council present. To make sure that we are all above board and not trampling on any individual, any individuals' rights. Or the, uh, legal protections of the village for those reasons. But because we said we would, we would do this, I will now make the motion pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code. To adjourn this, this meeting to an executive session, uh, regarding, uh, complaints. A complaint regarding the, uh, actions of our village plan.
And we could just say for personnel matters, like we do.
Or personnel, I do believe it has to be specific, but.
Every time we pack, going into executive session for personnel matters, that's the only thing that's ever been said.
Fair enough. I, I can be wrong on that too, Tony. It's okay. Mark it down twice today, uh, for personnel matters. Uh, do I have a second? So it's been seconded by Diane, uh, councilperson shrimp. Mayor Hughes, can you do a roll call vote?
Absolutely.
Uh, regarding whether or not, uh, we do in fact adjourn to this executive session.
Councilperson Burger. Councilperson Burger.
No.
Council president Wolf.
No.
Councilperson Benedetti.
No.
Councilperson Shrimp.
No, I, I, I've had enough today, so I'd like to.
Did I miss anybody? Um, councilperson McNamara, did I say you?
Yeah, not, not without, not without legal counsel presence.
So then if Mayor Hughes, if you could put that executive session on the end of the agenda for Tuesday. Uh, so that way we can, we can have that conversation then.
Perfect.
And make sure Jesse's invited, of course.
Yes, um, I'm gonna tell you right now, I don't think he's gonna be there, because we switched it to Tuesday. He can do the second meeting, not the first meeting. Don't quote me on that. But I think you guys, if you all recall, he doesn't, he can't make that first one, because he has another obligation in one of his other. Uh, let's verify, uh, I will let you guys know that as soon as I get response via email today, but I don't think he's gonna be there Tuesday.
That's, and, and I think that's okay. I mean, again, we'd rather have him present for the conversation than not, and if it has to wait a week, so be it.
Okay, and I, again, I just want everybody to know that for the record.
He said that he's not gonna be able to make it on Tuesday, period, I thought.
No, he was there the, the last Tuesday, on the second meeting.
It's a certain Tuesday.
It's the first two, somebody else has basically our Monday schedule except Tuesdays.
He, he has to be, he has to be at Canal, I think, on that Tuesday.
Yeah.
So I will reach out to him and see if he's available on this one or the next one. Um, and then if he is, obviously, he's, he will, yeah, so let's just verify from him, but I, I wanna make that clear before everybody's like, oh, you guys are just trying to avoid something. I just, I don't want anybody to say that.
I guess if he is not available on either Tuesday, we'll just have to go commando and risk it. Right? I mean, I guess if he is not available, I'm willing to risk it, but I'd rather him be available.
Absolutely.
That's quite the visual, sir.
We can do a special meeting, if, if, if it's a, the council, we could do a special meeting on a Monday. Um, I, I, again, I'm, I'm open for suggestions.
Why don't you go ahead and send that email? And, and, you know, hopefully he's available on our second regular meeting. Which is our, our, generally our shorter meeting anyhow, which might make that a much more pleasant ordeal in general. So that's everything I had for this work session. Uh, anybody else have anything they wanted to bring up? Gold ones going twice. All right, I call this meeting, uh, I move to adjourn this work session. Bye, guys.